Thank you. That's a motion by Commissioner Foster with a second by Commissioner Hagforce. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Braga. I apologize.
No worries. Yes.
The Ferndale Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, January 6th, 2021. We are starting at 6:34 PM. And we will begin with a roll call by our city clerk, please.
Good evening. Commissioner Azar.
Here.
Commissioner Braga.
Here. Sorry, I was on mute.
Commissioner Brazen.
Here.
Commissioner Foster?
Here.
Commissioner Hagforce?
Here.
Commissioner Hosku?
Here.
Councilman Polika?
Here.
Commissioner Showalter?
Commissioner Showalter, let us know he'll be absent this evening.
Thank you. And Chair Baker?
Here. Great, we've got quorum for this evening. Is there someone who will move to... Why am I blanking on the word? Excuse Commissioner Showalter's absence, please.
This is Commissioner Brazen. I moved to for the excusal. For excusing? Sorry, sorry.
I like the made up word. Alright, Commissioner Brazen with the motion to excuse Commissioner Showalter. Do we have a second?
Foster seconds.
Thank you. A second by Commissioner Foster. We will have a roll call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Azar?
Yes.
Commissioner Braga?
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagforce?
Yes.
Commissioner Hosku?
Yes.
Councilman Polika?
Yes.
And Chair Baker?
Yes, thank you. That motion passes. Alright, we'll move on next to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening, Erin?
Just if you wanted to... The, I'm sorry, the electronic meeting. I don't know exactly where that would go. And then staff did have a few items regarding the future policy ordinance updates and changes. And I think it would go for administrative items, but just didn't know if we needed to add it or not.
There's no action on it, correct?
Correct.
It's just an update. Alright, I would suggest then, unless the clerk wants us to formally change something, Erin, I'd suggest that you show the the how-to comment slide during call to audience, and we can bring it back up at the public hearing.
Okay.
And then it sounds like the updates, you've got a commission items update, administrative items update, but there's no action on either of those. Is that alright with you, city clerk, that we leave it as is?
Yes. It's whatever the commission would like to do, but if if an item is being adjusted or moved, whether that's added or altered from what's listed on the agenda, then that should be reflected on the agenda.
Nope, nothing being, nothing being moved. We'll just have verbal updates during administrative items and commission items.
Perfectly fine.
Great, thank you. Alright, we'll move to the approval of the minutes. Item number, oh, I'm sorry, we need to approve the agenda. With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Foster moves to approve the agenda as provided.
Hagforce seconds.
Thank you. That's a motion by Commissioner Foster with a second by Commissioner Hagforce. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Azar?
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Braga. I apologize.
No worries. Yes.
Commissioner Hagforce?
Yes.
Commissioner Hosku?
Yes.
Councilman Polika?
Yes.
And Chair Baker?
Yes, did we miss someone? Did we miss Azar? Who did we miss?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, Showalter is usually after me, and that's probably why.
I may have just counted wrong. Alrighty, we'll move on to item number three, 3A, the approval of the minutes from the meeting of December 16th, 2020. I've got one correction to to read that was emailed to me, but do any commission members have any changes or corrections to the minutes from December 16th while I pull that one up? Nope, okay. We got one change via email. I also forwarded this to the city clerk. Currently, there is a, there's a comment. I don't have the page number, but I'm sure it's easy to to pull up. It was a comment from Mike Flores. The current comment reads, "For additional affordable housing comma, what pollution will that have on the surrounding community?" The correction is, "For additional affordable housing comma, what light pollution will that have on the surrounding community?" The question was about, was about lighting, not a broader question about pollution. So I've also forwarded that to the city clerk. Alright. Looking for an approval, a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Foster moves to approve the minutes as presented with the correction as noted by Chair Baker.
Thank you.
Polika seconds.
Thank you. I've got a motion from Commissioner Foster with a second from Councilman Polika. I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Azar?
Yes.
Commissioner Braga?
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagforce?
Yes.
Commissioner Hosku?
Yes.
Councilman Polika?
Yes.
Chair Baker?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes. Alright, we will move on next to our call to audience. Call to audience is a chance for anyone in the audience to address the planning commission on anything that's not on the agenda this evening. So just a quick, we'll just go through the agenda quickly to let people know. We've got a public hearing coming up about a conditional rezoning at 1701 Mapledale. We also have a discussion item on the Iron Row Apartments. So if there's anyone here who'd like to make a comment to the planning commission on anything other than those two items, this would be your chance to do that. Erin's going to share a slide that gives some instructions on how to, how to comment, either via video conferencing or via phone in. We'll have obviously chances to comment during the public hearing and the discussion as well on those items. But if there's anything else, you are welcome to share your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
I may through the chair. We also added something, if you notice on the screen right now, there is a box that is in green and has some text that says, "Would you like to stay up to date on planning commission items? Please follow the link below." We typically, when we're in person, we have a sign-in sheet, so this is our virtual sign-in sheet. And the link is seam, S-E-A-M dot L-Y backslash capital K, lowercase C, the number four, the letter G, capital N, capital O, a zero, and then two. So I can repeat that again. I'll leave this up there for a few minutes. But if you would like to stay up to date on anything that we discuss now or into the future, you can go to that link, and it's our virtual signup sheet that we're trying for the new year. I also have included our staff contact information at the bottom of the slide, so if you need to contact us or wish to contact us, I have that available as well.
Thanks, Erin. And for those on Zoom, the raise hand feature is in the participants box. So if you click on participants at the bottom of your screen, you'll see something that says raise hand.
It looks like the person that has their hand raised is Augusto Mike Flores.
Got it. Thanks, Erin. Welcome, Mike. Are you, is Mike able to unmute himself, or do you need to do that, Erin?
It appears that it's, that he is unmuted, but we don't have any sound.
I need to log off and log back on. I know that's, I've had that trouble. Yep. Sounds like he'll join us shortly.
Okay.
Oh, got it already.
So we can pause a moment. I don't have anyone else with their hands raised, so we can...
Through the chair, I have a question for Erin, if I may. The website that you cited where people can sign up, is that available on the website as well, on the planning commission page or anywhere for if someone across information about the planning commission, that they would be able to click it, or is it only available when you display it in these meetings?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So the intent, you know, it was admittedly a last minute thing yesterday, trying to figure out how we can do some process improvements for this year, and one of them was having a virtual sign-in. So the intent would absolutely be able to be, make it public. It's just not there yet because it was just created. So we're trying it out for this meeting, but following this meeting, it will be available online.
Excellent, excellent. I just want to make sure that people are aware that, you know, it's gonna be, you might not see it right now, but like, because it's new, we're just starting to roll it out, and this is the first introduction, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, has Mike been able to log back in? Oh, I see you.
Yeah.
Can you hear you? I can hear you. Wonderful, welcome.
I apologize. Sometimes you just kind of have to log in twice. I apologize about that. When it's not just, "Good evening, commission and commissioners. Happy New Year, Feliz Ano Nuevo. Augusto Mike Flores on Wittington Street." I moved to Michigan in 1999 to pursue an undergrad degree in architecture, if you can believe it, from the school, from U of D Mercy. After a year, I realized that I was actually better at numbers and networking than creating the next beautiful building. But my love for architecture remained. If you're familiar with U of D, you know the university has a strong focus on positive urban impact and social justice issues, and the School of Architecture was no exception. I remember one of my early projects was to envision an ideal experience of the person who does not live, work, or play in your building. I envisioned a movie as people walk or drove to inspire them. As I walk around some of our newest buildings, I'm left uninspired. As I walk, all I see is taller buildings and blank walls. I would challenge the future developments and developers to help inspire those who don't live, work, or play in those developments. An easy way would be to incorporate deliberate art installations to inspire our community as they walk, bike now, or drive. So during the break, I walked around the Ferndale House, the 409. And again, I was left uninspired, but I saw beautiful canvases that I felt could easily be adorned and inspired the community with art installations. At the last commission, we spoke about the affordable housing and how that back stairwell would look onto the back to some of those neighbors in the back, and they were concerned about the window there with the lighting polluting their backyards. And it was said, hey, can we break that up? And people were like, well, it's just gonna be a blank wall. And all I kept thinking about is a blank canvas to put art up on that wall. So as we look at new developments, is there, I challenge the commission and any developers that are present and that come and speak to the commission to think about different ways of taking those brick walls, those canvases that face our major doorways, to inspire the people who don't live there and who don't work where, who don't work there with art. I think it's, it would help those developments easily incorporate into our communities, but also further support really what makes, I think, Ferndale kind of unique, which is our embracing the art community. And those are my thoughts for this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry about the technical issue. Thanks for logging back in.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, alrighty. Anyone else for call to audience at this time?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do not currently have any other hands raised, nor do we have any call-in numbers.
Got it. Alright, then we will move on to item number five. 5A is the consideration of a conditional rezoning for 1701 Mapledale. This is a public hearing. So we will have, sorry, make a note there. I'll have an opportunity for people to comment or ask questions of the applicant. What we'll do is I will open, I'm sorry, we'll start with an introduction from our city staff and any information on the site plan that the applicant needs to share. Then I'll open the public hearing. So any, anyone who has questions or comments on it has three minutes. You can ask whatever you'd like. We'll take all of those questions and comments, then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll work through getting the answers to those questions and comments. We'll then deliberate and take questions and comments from the planning commission, but we'll start with the public. So to kick it off, I will turn it over to whichever member of our city staff. I imagine it's Erin? Is working on the consideration of a conditional rezoning for 1701 Mapledale. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you. So this property is part of the Hazel Park School system site at 1701 Mapledale. It is the mechanic shop that is at that dead end portion of Mapledale. If approved for the conditional rezoning, the lot will go through a lot split and combination process. So the current underlying zoning is the school, of the school property is R1 residential. And the applicant wishes to continue the use of the major and minor vehicle mechanic repair and for the conditional rezoning into M1 light industrial. The applicant does not intend to change any part of the site as part of the process, so no building amendments or anything like that at this time, and will continue to operate as is. An access agreement with the current vacated portion of Mapledale will be granted to the applicant as part of the sale of the land, as indicated by the applicant, so they would still have access to the parking lot that's on the east side of the building. And in addition to that, if this, as mentioned, if this was approved tonight for conditional rezoning, and then it would move on to city council after that final approval, then it would go through the lot split combination process to disassociate itself from the school property. So I do want to make a note that there was an error in the staff report regarding lands, the landscape plan that was supposed to be left blank. They do not have a landscape plan that they had provided. And so I just wanted to make that note. I have updated it at our end, but it isn't reflected in the current packet that's published. And with that, I welcome the applicant to make any comments as well regarding this project.
Thanks, Erin. Welcome.
Hi, hi, this is Jeffrey Schroder. I'm the attorney for the applicant, LC Land Company LLC, owned by Mr. Chuck Hamilton, who is on the call here as well. I also believe that representatives of the school district are in attendance to answer any related questions. This is surplus property for the school district at this time, and it is currently a non-conforming use because school district property has the underlying zoning of R1. But the applicant does not intend to change the use or any aspect of the structure and essentially has a purchase agreement with the school district for the property and also some of the personal property there. I will note that there was, we did read the staff recommendation in the staff report, and we concur with all of the notes by the staff. I will add that there will be no auto body work being done on this site. There was a note about contacting the fire marshal. If that were the case, that is not going to be the case here. This will be an additional benefit to the schools to be able to sell some surplus property, and it will be a benefit to the city to put some property here on the tax rolls and bring some jobs and business in here. And really, the use isn't going to change. And we've provided our response to the rezoning criteria, and we do meet the criteria, and we do appreciate the staff working with us through these difficult times to, you know, get this submitted and get this on before the planning commission so quickly. So we're here to answer any questions and respectfully request your approval so this can move on to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schroder. Alright. Before we open the public hearing, I do just want to read through the conditions that the applicant has offered that would be a part of any conditional rezoning agreement. The first is that otherwise, unless otherwise approved by the city, the use of the property will be limited to use as a vehicle repair, major and minor, in the M1 guidelines as defined in the city's zoning ordinance. In the event the project fails to receive certificate of occupancy within two years from the city council, I'm sorry, within two years from the city council approval, the conditional rezoning agreement shall become null and void, and the zoning of the property shall automatically revert to its underlying zoning designation of R1 single family. Number three, prior to final site plan approval by city staff, the developer and the city will enter into the conditional rezoning agreement that would be approved by the city attorney and recorded with the property. Number four, the developer agrees that there will be no other principal building on the premises. Number five, green space will be maintained, and the surrounding properties will be buffered by deciduous and evergreen trees. Green space may increase if more surplus parking is able to be removed. Sealed landscape plan by a registered landscape architect will be provided as part of the request. Number six, architectural elevations will be provided. Number seven, the exterior will undergo a thorough cleaning or coverage, and any damaged areas will be repaired or improved upon. I wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware that those were, were in our packet as conditions, and that those were also, that those were the ones you were familiar with and that you had offered.
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, I will now open up the public hearing for the consideration of a conditional rezoning for 1701 Mapledale. It is 6:55 PM. If you would like to participate in the public hearing, please either raise your hand on Zoom as a part of the participants function, or if you're here via phone, our city staff will help administer any phone comments. If you'd like to participate in the public hearing, please let us know through one of those two means. You've, please state your name and address for the record. You've got three minutes for any comments.
I do not currently see any raised hands, nor do we have any call-ins at this time.
Let's just give it a sec in case someone is looking for the functionality on the Zoom. Again, on Zoom, if you need to raise your hand, go down to the bottom navigation bar, click on participants, and you'll see something that says raise hand.
I do not see any raised hands, and we have not received any additional callers on this time.
Alright, then we will close the public hearing. It is 6:56 PM. And we will move to discussion and deliberation among the planning commission. The commission is a recommending body to the city council on this item. We are not the approving body. The city council approves rezonings. So it's a conditional rezoning. I just read through the conditions. We also had the applicant's responses to our rezoning criteria in the rezoning ordinance semester plan amendment application that was a part of our packet. Do we have any planning commission members who either have questions on the criteria or on the conditions or anything else for the applicant? You can go ahead and unmute yourself if anyone's got questions for the applicant.
Commissioner Braga here. I don't have any questions, but I want to say that I biked to the site this morning. I think the idea of continuing the use as is makes sense given the context, given the prevailing use, given Ferndale's identity as an extremely mixed commercial, industrial, and residential city. I am in support of the conditional rezoning.
Thanks, Commissioner Braga. I agree. We are a, we're a city that has evolved with a lot of different uses and a lot of different ways over time, so this is an existing continuation of an existing non-conforming in this space sort of tucked behind MX. Makes sense to me. I do have one question for our city staff. I know that this is advertised as 1701 Mapledale. The building says Hazel Park Community Schools Automotive Tech Center 1600 Mapledale. And I know that that's the address that is under the photo on the second page of our packet as well. So just wanted to to sort of state for the record, we're looking at the, at the building that currently has an address on it of 1600 Mapledale. It's on the south side of the street, the even numbered side.
Yes, that is correct. There was a bit of discrepancy and kind of back and forth of like which one, which address should be used since it is technically
Totally understand.
property and that, so I don't know if the applicant has any more to speak upon that about if there's going to be an address change for that particular parcel, but there was a little bit of back and forth on that regard.
Yeah, totally understand.
Through the chair?
Commissioner Azar?
Yes, thank you. So, thank you, because that clarifies it, because I think the sheet that was in there, the C 1.2, was kind of confusing to me because it did show development over the whole site. And I just wanted to confirm that that was a previous plan and the use of this sheet is just for reference, or could we confirm that, please?
That was the site survey sheet, Krista?
Yeah.
Yeah, not the site plan, but the survey.
Right.
Yeah, so for, for all of these types of projects, a full survey is required, and that is a survey of the entire site. And the particular site that we're interested in is that southwest corner. Because of the way the lot splits and the conditional rezoning go, we recommend doing the conditional rezoning first and then going through the lot split and combination process. So as such, right now, it's part of the Hazel Park property, but then will be reflected in that once the parcel is, the lot split is conducted and those other parcels are combined. So that might be where a little bit of the confusion and discrepancy is.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Foster. I have the same concern, and that I think for clarity, I believe our site plan motion states the site plan's dated 11/17, that, so the third site plan in our packet has a date of 11/16/20, which shows the southwest, southwest corner of that lot. And so maybe we just need within our motion some further language regarding which plans we're adopting. And then in terms of an additional condition on the rezoning, and I don't think this becomes a legal issue. However, I would add that it would be conditioned upon the lot split and combination.
Thank you. Would the applicant be comfortable offering that additional condition? That the rezoning be conditioned upon the successful completion of the lot split?
No objection.
Thank you. And does that reflect your intent, Commissioner Foster?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And through the chair, the, the date is, we typically go by the date that it's actually received by the city. And so that's maybe why there was that confusion there, but based on when we received and stamped and signed by the folks that receive it, it's on the
Thank you. So then in the site plan approval, we're approving the three sheets that are provided in the packet?
Everything, yes, everything in the packet is what has been submitted.
Okay, and so, and I guess I don't know the best way, again, I think maybe I would just want a clarification, sorry, on the site plan motion regarding, since there is that proposed additions on that second sheet, just for clarification within our motion.
That's on the site survey though, not on the site plan, right?
But it's still adopted as a site planet. From, if, from what Erin just said, if we're
Site plan's only one page.
The site plan is one page.
So then it's just the one page that's dated 116 that we're, from what Erin said, is that we also need to include the utilities or I forget what was.
The site survey?
The site survey, so. Which is part of the site plan package, which would be adopted as part of a package. Or am I? Which is part of the site plan package, which would be adopted as part of a package, or am I mistaken?
Are you just wanting to make it clear that we are not, I mean, so this is a site survey that's existing as built, and I see where it says proposed addition out of the school from 2017, so 1262017 is when these site surveys were done, it looks like.
And, I mean, was that already built as modeled? I don't think so. So I guess I just feel like there's still maybe confusion.
Yeah, so maybe I can try to clarify things a bit. So for every submission such as these, we need a full survey. Since it was part of the school property and is still part of the school property, it's the full school survey that was provided as part of this and indicated on the site plan. It's that southwest corner of the property. And on this full survey, you can kind of see that building, I think it's page CE1, that you can see that. And so the full survey is what the school has on file for the survey of the site. And then with that, they have the site plan for the particular area that they will be doing a lot split and lot combination.
Should I clarify, maybe?
Sure.
I don't want to interrupt. I don't want to interrupt, but there was, we submitted an older survey that we received from the school district dating 2017 to sort of get this thing kickstarted. A new survey is being provided for the lot split. The building addition you're seeing there has nothing to do with this project. So we have no objection to essentially saying there is no building addition. And a new survey is going to be provided for the lot split. This was just an older survey so we could get things going and sort of show the city and the planning department what we knew about the site. I hope that's helpful.
Through the chair.
Wait, Krishna Foster, did that answer your question? Or did we could add a condition about a new survey being provided for the lot split?
That'd be great. Also, I don't even know if we need to invest in a new survey unless it's required by the city. Just more so, I don't think it's a big issue. I just think for clarification and make sure that there's no confusion about that survey, which is also titled utility plan, which clearly not the site plan that we're approving. However, if it's within the packet, you know, I just don't want any confusion down the way. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Azar.
Thank you. Yeah, that was my same concern is that it's included as the utility plan and it's listed for bid. So it's definitely identifying new scope of work. So, so I could be, understand, is CE1 was the original survey to get things started? And then the last drawing sheet in the package, which is also labeled CE1, is current. Could it be that C1.2, which is the utility plan, is not needed and could be removed from this packet? So there's not a confusion about other proposed scope? Would it matter if it were not included in this?
That would probably, that would be an Aaron Justin question.
I don't see any issue with that. Justin Lyons are planning manager. I don't know if you have any insight on that?
Yeah, there's no issue. There's no issue. That can be removed if this moves forward to council. It was more of just a, sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It was just concluded more for context, but we can take it out for the next meeting pending if it goes to city council.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that all of the criteria was available on the other two sheets and that this one wasn't really needed any further beyond that, because it was kind of confusing to me to see all that. Thank you.
So then I've got notes on two new conditions for the site plan motion, that a new survey will be provided and that the utility plan will be removed from the packet that goes to council. Does that work, Michelle and Krista?
Foster, Commissioner Foster, just, I want to reiterate, if we don't need a new survey, I don't want to put the onus on the developer to to have the cost of providing a new one if the current one's not sufficient, but I would put that on the city staff.
So you don't feel that that needs to be a condition of the motion?
Correct. I agree with Commissioner Azar, though, that we should strike the C1.2 to reduce confusion. Thank you.
If I could just add, I think the existing survey is fine for the city. The lot split would eventually go to Oakland County. So I think maybe if the language just says a new survey provided if required by Oakland County assessing that way, because this definitely would work for city to review the first application.
Okay. I'd be looking for the first of these two motions, then, the conditional rezoning.
Sorry, I have some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Pollocka? Yep.
That's okay. You're talking about a number of documents that are and aren't going to go to council, and I kind of like to weigh in. So, and honestly, I'm a little confused by some of the names that you're giving some of these documents because I'm not following it along. So what I would suggest, and maybe this is actually what you're suggesting, is the document called 52443 Site Plan, which is the sixth document in the list. I think that should be pulled, and I think the second document, 17068 Edison Max Site Survey, should be highlighted with the area that we're talking about so that council, when it sees this document, knows exactly the portion of property that is going to be removed from public space. Is that what's being proposed?
Not exactly. I think some of the questions had to do with, particularly on the utility survey, proposed additions and other things that aren't relevant.
Now you're talking about a utility survey, and I don't see
That's the second sheet in the site survey, so.
So in the site survey, it's
It's two pages.
Oh, yeah, I don't think the second sheet. I was, I was talking about the first sheet. I'm so
Okay, that's okay. So, Justin and Erin, and it sounds like it would be helpful for council to have an updated survey that specifically calls out the building to be split off, is what I'm hearing from you, councilman. Yes?
Yes, it would be much more, but I think they need to have a relationship to the entire property.
Thank you. Is that possible before it goes to council? Justin or Erin?
Yeah, we can attach and modify the agenda items so that it's a little bit clearer for them and indicate the exact location on the overall survey, what we're indicating at this time.
Yeah, that's important to me because when I look at the document that I'm suggesting not be included, the one that says 524 Site Plan, I'm not sure exactly what part of the property is going to be removed. Does that include the vacated portion of Mapledale Avenue?
So the, so the site plan is required because that's, that's what the new property and what the new site will be. So, and as part of that agreement, based on the discussions we've had with the applicant, as part of the sale of those parcels, there would be that easement that would be provided to them so that they could still access on the east side of the building. There is parking, and that's where some of the overhead garage doors are for vehicle access. And so they would still be able to access that area of the property via that easement.
Okay. And see, I think it's important that we know exactly where those are drawn, where those lines are going to be drawn. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, this is going from non-taxable property to now private taxable property.
Correct.
Yep, okay. The last question that I have is, and this may be something that I actually have to pose with our lawyers, but do we have an agreement with Hazel Park Schools that when they offer for sale any public land, that the city has first opportunity, first right of refusal? Because basically, this is non-taxable property that's, you know, now being excised, you know, off of Hazel Park Schools, but the city wasn't given an opportunity to weigh in on whether it wanted to use the property. Not that I'm saying that we would. I just want to make sure that we're not missing a step in this entire process of Hazel Park selling off property within the city that the city should have had first right of refusal.
I personally do not know the answer to that. I'm not the city attorney. Is, it's a city, it's not city-owned property, it's the schools' owned property?
That's what I'm saying, the school, but it's public property. It's within the city, public property that's within the city. And I don't know, it'd be the same thing as the portion of Martin Road Park that we dealt with last year, where the school, Hazel Park Schools, had part ownership of it, but then there was this whole disagreement about owned what. So I want to make sure that there's nothing in place from 1927, when we became a city and Hazel Park Schools had property within the city, that there isn't something that says the city has first right of refusal. Because I'd just like to go through that. I'm not, again, I'm not saying that the city has any want or need of this property, but I don't want some legal case to come back later because someone found this document that we should have addressed.
Madam Chair, I could add a condition on our approval of the conditional rezoning to the effect of the city attorney reviewing for any prior right of first refusal conditions on the property.
We're not able to add conditions, but we can, because those are offered by the applicant, but we do have the applicant here, and we could ask if they would offer that condition.
Yes, so I believe, you know, if we offer that condition, it would go into a rezoning agreement that then would be recorded. I think the question is whether or not somehow there's some contractual relationship between the city and the school district where the city would have a right of first refusal. We don't have an objection to making sure that this property is free and clear for the school district to sell to my client, not at all. I don't know that necessarily needs to be put in the rezoning agreement, but I think maybe as part of the overall motion, we have absolutely no objection to that. I've been working with the school districts, legal counsel who handles real estate matters and other issues, and very thorough and has a lot of historical knowledge. And certainly I'll be in contact with legal counsel for the school district after this meeting to confirm this is not the case. And certainly, we would want to know if that's the case. So I would doubt that that's the case here, but I certainly agree that as part of due diligence here, we should ensure that that doesn't happen. And we certainly don't want any surprises at the council.
Thank you. And that's really what I'm going for. I just don't want any surprises down the road.
It sounds like you're speaking for relatively recent experience commissioner, or Councilman Pollocka, so thank you. This is helpful because that process didn't
Martin Road Park.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, that didn't come through planning commission, so thank you. All right. Other questions or comments from the commission before we have a motion?
For clarification, so we're not going to add as a condition, but shall we add it to the motion in some way?
Chair, I think that we can just work with Mr. Schroeder and the city attorney. And if we don't do that, then Councilman Pollocka definitely hold us accountable at the council meeting. But I've got this here in my notes, underlined and bolded, that we will do that.
Yeah, if it's okay through the chair, I don't think it needs to be part of the motion, but staff is aware. And so when it comes back to council, I would expect that those answers, those questions have been answered.
Thanks, Councilman. Thanks, Commissioner Foster.
And Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion in the matter of 1701 Mapledale that the planning commission recommends city council approve the conditional rezoning from R1 to M1 with the following findings as presented in the packet and subject to the conditions as presented in the packet with the addition of the condition of a lot split per the site plan, CE1 dated 111620, to be approved by the county after a public hearing was held, as set and published for the state in place.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Commissioner Foster. Is there a second on that motion?
Motion seconded.
Thank you. Was that Commissioner Braga? Thank you. All right, any discussion on that motion? If not, we will have a roll call vote from our seat clerk.
Chair Baker, can you clarify for me, was the motion that was made as written or did Commissioner Foster make adjustments to the motion that was previously written?
She added a condition number eight, which was confirmed and offered by the applicant that this conditional rezoning is conditioned on the approval of a lot split by Oakland County.
I just want to make sure I record it.
Yep, absolutely. If we were in person, I'd be passing you my notes.
It's the thought that counts.
Yes. Barb would get all of my scrawled notes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, we will have a vote then. Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Azar?
Yes.
Commissioner Braga?
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagforce?
Yes.
Commissioner Hosku?
Yes.
Councilman Pollocka?
Yes.
And Chair Baker?
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you to the applicants from Hazel Park Public Schools. Have a good evening. All right, moving on to our next business item.
Chair?
I'm sorry, who was that? Justin.
Justin, there's also a site plan motion.
Oh, geez, site plan. I'm going too fast. Thank you.
No problem.
Very important, since we just talked about it for 15 minutes. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster would like to make a motion in the matter of 1701 Mapledale. The planning commission approved the site plan based on plans dated received by the planning department on November 17, 2020, with the following findings as presented in the packet, with conditions one and two as presented in the packet, with the addition of condition three, that the survey plan marked C1 dot two be stricken from the site plan package. That's it, sorry.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Braga seconds.
Thank you. I've got a motion by Commissioner Foster with a second by Commissioner Braga. City clerk, any questions on the condition that was added by Commissioner Foster?
If you're talking, you are muted.
Yep, I sure was, and I'm jumping between too many windows. I kept alt-tabbing and not getting back to the meeting. Yes, could I just hear condition three one more time to ensure I have it?
To strike the survey plan marked C1 dot two from the site plan package.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner Foster. All right, any discussion on the motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Azar?
Yes, thank you. Was this the, under the site plan approval, we had asked for a new survey to identify the portion that would be split off? Did we still feel that was necessary as a condition? Or was that going to be handled administratively?
As a friendly amendment, I could add a condition number four that states that the city staff will work with the applicant to, um, provide a clear survey that marks the, um, the site as noted in the site plan, um, as separate from the portion of the overall school.
Yeah, separating the subject site from the school parcel. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right, um, Commissioner Braga, uh, would you second that addition to the motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And is that clear to our, yeah, I was just going to ask our city staff and our clerk, did you need any clarifications?
I, yeah, what Commissioner Foster said and then what you tweaked, which one is the wording in the condition for?
Commissioner Foster's.
Okay, so I have city staff will work with the applicant to provide a clear survey that marks the site as noted in the site plan as separate from the portion of the overall school. Is that what Commissioner Foster intended?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Then we will have a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagforce.
Yes.
Commissioner Hosku. Councilman Polka.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, the motion passes. All right, thank you again to our neighbors from Hazel Park, um, Public Schools. Sorry, I jumped ahead a little too fast last time. Have a good evening. We will move on to item. We do not have any old business this evening nor any new business. Um, so no other action items this evening. So moving on to item number eight A, our discussion item. This is a discussion of the Iron Row Apartments. We saw a site plan, uh, or a, not, I don't think it was a site plan. I think it was a different discussion item. Um, some years back for this property. Uh, we've now gotten an update in front of us. Um, so we'll start with an introduction from our city staff. Um, and then information from the applicant. I'll then take questions and comments from the audience, similar to how we did the public hearing. Uh, we'll work to get answers to those questions. Um, and then we will uh, have time for the commission to ask questions and make comments. So we'll start with our city staff.
Great, thank you. So this is, um, the project commonly known as Iron Row Apartments, uh, located at the southeast corner of East Ten Mile in Bermuda. The, uh, proposed multifamily, uh, residential development is currently zoned R three zoning. Um, it's in, has ninety-four for rent multifamily units, four floors, totaling, uh, forty-four, uh, feet high, um, with a tallest parapet at fifty-six, which complies with our ordinance. Um, there's units that will be s- studio one and two bedroom units and, um, offer a variety of amenities, um, for this development. Um, as Chair Baker said, this is simply a discussion. So I welcome the applicant to provide any other context. And when you're ready, I will share my screen and we can walk through, um, some of the design documents that were provided in the packet. Jason.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. That, that was kind of late, Erin. I thought you said you were going to walk through the whole thing. Oh, I got it. I'm kidding. So, uh, welcome back, Justin. I have to say that it's been, it's been a while. Congratulations. That was good to, good to see you're back.
Thank you.
So my, my name is Jason Krieger with Krieger Cloud Architects, twenty-one twenty East Eleven Mile in Royal Oak. With me tonight is Craig Singer. He's with Iron Ridge Holdings. And this project, it's a, it's a residential development, but it's really an extension of Iron Ridge. So this is called Iron Row. Iron Ridge is across the street to the west. And, uh, it's, it's a big, uh, project and endeavor to rehabilitate and bring back to life Iron Ridge. And it's been in process for a number of years. And what I think you're all going to see is a lot of activity happening. Uh, we're going, we're right, right now in parallel with this, we're working on, uh, exterior facade improvements, uh, site improvements, uh, things like that. And so dovetailing in with that is this project here. So we're looking at this like a district, okay? We have what's going to be a mixed use, uh, development. At the end of the day, we, we're going to have office users and now we're going to have some residential, hopefully. So over, over the years, uh, the partnership was able to, uh, combine these lots along the east side uh, of the street across from Iron Ridge. And, uh, create something that's big enough to do a, a decent sized, uh, product that we think would really be a benefit to the area. At a, at a high level, the, the development, uh, not only fits the needs of the, a good unit mix, but it's, has a good design. We have good quality materials on it. We have a ton of green space. Uh, we have ample parking enough where we might be able to shave a few off. And, uh, we're really excited to share this with you guys tonight. So what, uh, I think we'll do is, is walk through, I have the PDF open. Let me see if you want to start the, at the top here in one second. Um, it's a little, yeah, I guess, why don't you start at the top, Erin? I'll just walk through. I'll try and be brief. I don't want to take up all night long, uh, with you guys, but we'll, uh, we'll give you a, a kind of a, a once over on what we're doing here. Okay, uh, next slide, please. So these are just three D aerials of, of what we're proposing. Let's go to the next slide. We have better shots down the road. Okay, here you go. So this is important. So this right here shows where the, where the land is. So to the left of that yellow box is Iron Ridge. Bermuda is between Iron Ridge and that Iron Row Apartments, which is the yellow box running north and south. So downtown Ferndale is obviously all the way down there at the bottom of the, bottom of the sheet. Okay, next slide. Uh, so this right here, it's a, this right here is just a zoning diagram. What happened here though, just to ca- just to catch everybody up is north actually turned to the left. And we ended up orienting the plans, uh, where north is on the left of the sheet, just to get it to fit. Uh, so I, so that's what you're going to see as we move through. So basically it's zoned R three. We have R one, uh, to the east or behind us. And then we have Iron, uh, Ridge, which was industrial and now is turning into more of a mixed use operation, which is to the west. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so this right here is the proposed site plan. Uh, this right here, we, let's walk through. So let's zoom in a little bit, Erin, if you could. All right. Well, I wish I could, wish I could point. So in the middle, the, the shaded gray box, that's the, that's the apartment building. To the east of that, uh, we have some other shaded gray boxes. Those are carports. Okay. And then what you could see is to the left or the north and the right or the south, we have parking and we have green space and public amenities. So currently the parking, uh, requirement is a hundred and fifty-one and we have a hundred and sixty-one. And when we presented that to staff, they said, well, you know, can you take even more out? And we said, well, you know, we'll, we'll see, we, we can, uh, we, we do want to make sure we have enough parking for guests and everything else. So that's, that's the current ratio that we have. And as you can see, you know, we have like a, a, a ton of green space along the north, uh, right along the service drive. We have ample green belt that then turns to the south or obviously west heading south. And then what you come upon is a, a pool, pool deck area, outdoor amenity space, cabanas. We plan on screening it with vegetation. That would be totally fenced in. That's just for the tenants only. And then that actually ties into a, like an indoor amenity space, which I'll, I'll, I'll share with you. Then as we head south, uh, one thing I do want to point out, and this is something that Justin and, Justin and I spoke about before, uh, he went on paternity leave and then Erin and I spoke about, is the building length and the orientation of it. So, uh, in the ordinance, this is something that we need a little bit of clarification on still. Says that a building cannot exceed a hundred and fifty feet in any given plane, but then you can break it. And then it gives you, and I'm looking at the ordinance right now, uh, parameters of what you can create almost like courtyards, if you will. So we plan on meeting that. And right before, I don't know if you remember, Justin, before you, uh, you left, we were talking about taking this building, cutting it in half, so to speak. And that's what we did. And that, that may not meet, that may not be as deep as what we need. But the intent with this project is to cut the building in half visually to meet the ordinance and break it down so that it visually looks, uh, smaller. The initial plan that we had here was really two buildings and that pool was between the two buildings. And what we wanted to do was condense this building because it started to get too long. And we, we even looked internally here, you know, do we do three buildings? You know, how do we fit and meet the ordinance? And what happened was visually this building got longer and filled up more space than what we really wanted to. What we wanted to do was create more green space around the building and bring it together. So our goal here is to A, not have any variances, comply with everything, build a beautiful product and have this building visually come together, create the bump ins and outs as required and, and just make, you know, make it, make it amazing. So as we go south, we have a pocket park and a dog park combined. They're about a hundred feet by seventy feet. So about seven thousand square feet of outdoor amenity space for tenants. And then south of that, we have a covered, uh, bike repair, you know, uh, fill up your tires, storage type space there. And we have some renderings of some, of some concepts for that. So then as you look at the, uh, let's look at the west property line, okay, which, which faces Iron Ridge. We're purposely bringing the building back. I think it's, I'm going off memory here. It's, I think it's six feet on the south piece. Yeah, six foot four on the south end and twelve foot on the other end. Again, to step the building, it gives us some greenery in front of the building or between the sidewalk and the building. What we, what we really don't want to do is create such a step in the building that we're putting the building right on the sidewalk. It's only a five or six foot sidewalk. It would be, it'd be bad planning to do that. So we want to bring it back. We can do some outdoor little seating areas for the tenants, do some greenery as you walk by and create a very nice urban experience. And then there's more space on the north end because we're, again, we're stepping in the building. And then as we go to the east on the other side of the carports, we're creating, uh, as much of a green space as we can. And then we plan on doing a wall and a vegetation. Our goal here is to try and, uh, screen the neighbors to the east as much as possible. That's another reason why we have the building fronting Bermuda. So it's not only a better pedestrian experience, uh, closer to the street, but it's also, uh, it's also getting the building as far away from the neighbors to the east as possible. That's just, it's good practice whenever, whenever you're up against R one. And then, uh, I guess just high level, you could see that we added, and this was at the recommendation of staff, uh, when we had a preliminary meeting a few weeks ago. We added more green belts, uh, other areas where we took out some parking and added some more, uh, islands, I should say, and trees. Uh, another ele- uh, another item I want to touch on is, uh, let's see, if you could hover your cursor, Erin, to like the big box that's right to the right of the pool deck area. To the right, there you go. So that's our en- main entrance, amenity space. You know, that's like the, the main hub for the tenants. And we haven't completely programmed the amenity space yet. But we have, you know, a few thousand square feet at least. And it might be a small, you know, small gym, just things that are common, you know, in, in, in apartments these days that we really want to provide. But what, what we're doing there is we're actually lining that up with what will be one of the main entrances at the wirehouse across the street of Iron Ridge. So we're planning on creating a nice walkway across Bermuda and taking it through the parking lot. So we're looking at sight lines and how do we tie Iron Row to Iron Ridge in a way that when you drive through that, it feels like it's cohesive? So these are all things that are in action right now and we're working through them, both materiality wise as well as look wise. Um, so I think let's go to the next, uh, slide, please. So the next couple sheets are, are floor plans. And essentially what you're going to see, it's, uh, what would be considered a, a double loaded corridor, okay, for, for apartments. The yellow represents common areas, um, as far as hallways, stairs. You can see we have some, some garages that are, that are in the color white to the, uh, east of the yellow, uh, hallway, main corridor. The blue represents our clubhouse, amenity areas. And then we have the mix, the unit mix. And I forgot what it was. I think it's, uh, twenty-three percent one bedrooms, forty percent two bedrooms, and then thirty-six percent studios. So we have a total of ninety-four units and that complies with the, um, ordinance requirements for units per acre. And then if we go to the next floor, uh, which is, I think from there on up, they're pretty much standard. You typically would stack them up. So we have a total of four floors. And then we go to the next. So these are elevations. These are a little bland because there's just two D elevations. But the idea here is we have mostly brick, uh, which is, uh, floors one through three. We do have some corrugated metal siding, but we're looking at using that on Iron Ridge across the street. So we're, again, we're trying to blend these together, but it's really only on the bookends. So we're raising the north corner and the south corner up higher to bookend this building and introduce that material. And then the upper materials would be a James Hardy panel. And we might introduce a lap siding or something like that, but something that we're, we're sensitive to some of the requirements and thoughts about, you know, tying in certain materials with, with the surrounding community. So we're trying to use tho- those materials, but use them in a good creative way. Next slide, please. These are the, the units. Um, I don't think there's any reason to go through. We can if you want, but next slide. These are standard one and two bedroom apartment layouts, if you will. And then here's some renderings. So this right here is, again, some of the materials are still, still being, you know, honed in. But you can see we're trying to create a walkway through there. We pictured, you know, vegetation, trees, you know, it'll be very nice when it's all, it's all said and done. And you can flip through. There's the pool area. Next slide. Uh, there's the pocket park, dog park. And then this is just kind of showing the access on the, the, the main amenity space is two stories. So it'd be really nice when you walk in. That, this right here shows the, the glass break. It's, it'll, it will look like all glass. So the idea is to have two separate buildings when you drive by or look at it. And again, you know, the ordinance, it, you know, the way it's described where it's front to front, front to rear, or rear to rear, twenty-five feet, you know, I think it needs to be twenty feet back, twenty-five feet wide. But we need, Justin, the, I'm glad you're back. You need a little bit of help on figuring that out. Um, but the idea is to do that. So it's, uh, it's breaking this, this baby up and, uh, but it's still keeping it together. Because again, it's good planning. I truly believe this, to keep this thing as brought together as possible to create more, you know, greenery around it. Uh, and then the next slide. Uh, just a view of, you know, uh, the, the park and amenity. We have to develop it, but it'll be really nice when you walk by. And the next one. And then we, you know, we have a covering, bike repair, et cetera. And these are the things, you know, it's meant for tenants, but you know, people will use it while they're, you know, touring around Ferndale. So. Um, I think that's about what we have. Yeah, that's my, that, that's, that's all I have to really say. I don't know, Craig, if you want to add anything or if you think that, that covered it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, no, I don't, I don't have anything to add. I, I, I think that maybe, well, I guess something to add. But there, there's a lot of, uh, a, a lot of dimension on the front elevation in terms of areas that are popped out and, and set back, um, that you could see on the renderings that Jason didn't mention, but they're, they're all visual. And then I think the, the, what he was discussing in terms of that, that glass, um, uh, it would almost look from the outside like a glass atrium connecting the two buildings. Uh, so it would be, it, it would seem like, like two separate buildings with a connection. And, you know, it's completely different architectural type of a connection that I, I certainly think it meets the intent of, of what you were looking for to, to avoid a long monotonous stretch.
Right, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a discussion item. There is no action on this item this evening. We do not have an official site plan in front of us, but you've seen, um, elevations, um, and floor plans, uh, from the applicant. And they've talked about some of their vision, um, for the area. So we will start with any questions or comments from the audience. Uh, we'll take all of those in, sort of similar to how we do a public hearing. Um, and then we'll work through those with the applicant and with the city staff. Um, and then we will, uh, take questions and comments from the planning commission. Um, and then we will take questions and comments from the planning commission. So I will ask Erin to help me, since we do, I do have two sheets of, of faces here in front of me. Just to see if we've got people with hands raised or people on the phone, please.
Yeah, we do have, um, one person so far, and I will just note that this, um, this type of project does require the enhanced notice. And so prior to this meeting, there was a mailing that went out um, to the surrounding area to notify folks about that this was going to be a discussion item. Um, so the first person that we have, um, with their hand raised is Erin M.
Hi Erin, welcome.
Hello. Hi. Um, I'm Erin Molnar. I live on Minerva Street. So our street will be the one that is, um, up against the carports. Um, I'm, I'm excited about this development. I think it looks really nice. Um, and I'm excited for more density here in this neighborhood and more development. And so far, it seems like, um, the Iron Ridge District and developers are, um, really conscious of our community, so I appreciate that. Um, I am wondering about the road, about Bermuda. Um, it's in pretty terrible condition. It's one of the worst roads in Ferndale in terms of potholes and stuff. And so I, I do wonder, um, I guess I'm not aware of any plans to resurface Bermuda. Um, that doesn't mean that there's not any plans to resurface Bermuda in the near future, but I'm wondering about the, um, the increased traffic there, um, on the road. That's my only kind of main question.
Thanks Erin. We will see if our city staff can help us with that. Any other questions or comments from the audience at this time, Erin?
The next one in line. The next one in line is, uh, Leanna Sullivan.
Welcome, Leanna.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time. Um, so to piggyback off of Erin, um, do I need to give my address?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. So I'm at three, 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 six Minerva. And I'm on the east side of the street, um, three or four homes south of Ten Mile Service Drive. Um, so yeah, to piggyback, I am very concerned about the condition of Bermuda Street, as Erin said. Um, so I'm curious to know, um, how, if construction is going to play a role in damaging it or if there are any, uh, yeah, any plans to fix it. Um, additionally, I'm curious to know, um, because we're going to be so close to the construction site, if there's any estimated timeline for how long construction would be going on. Um, another concern would be, um, or a question rather, not a concern, just a question. How tall is the four stories going to be in feet, just out of curiosity? Because I do watch the sunset from my home, and it will be, it potentially could be blocking that, so I'm just curious. Um, and then just a side note is, um, when you're on the Ten Mile Service Drive, um, signage for Bermuda is lacking. Um, so if you're heading westbound on Ten Mile, there's really no way to know where Bermuda is, and that's been a concern for me. And so as for the developer, that's something that you should be concerned about too, um, for people to find your residential apartments. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Leanna.
Okay, the next person is Michael Yoga.
Welcome, Michael.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Uh, so I am with my wife, Jaclyn. Uh, we are at thirty-two oh seven Minerva. And so we would be on the side of the street that will be backed up to the proposal. Um, we just bought the house in August and moved in. And so when we bought this house, we had dreams of, you know, fixing it up, starting our family here. And my biggest concern, uh, would be more the privacy um, as far as having apartments that are now four stories tall, looking into our backyard, our back windows, places where we would have kids, you know, living their lives. And we have a handful of kids along the street on this side of the road, um, that I would have concerns for as well. And then on top of that, I have concerns regarding the extra flow of traffic, not necessarily on Bermuda, uh, but as well through our neighborhood. And then an additional concern regarding parking for visitors at the complex. Um, I'm not sure what they have mapped out for visitor parking, um, but I, you know, we've all been to, uh, college towns and all that, and we, you know, kids are always finding places to park in nearby communities. And I would be concerned about parking on, uh, specifically Minerva Street where it's usually, you know, pretty empty. We have plenty of kids that rollerblade, skate up and down the street, so I'm concerned for that safety. Um, then I also do share a concern with that height of the building blocking the sun in the afternoon and the evening, uh, as mentioned before. Um, and then just the overall noise, not only with construction, but in the long term with, you know, a pool and, you know, yes, that looks great, and that's a great amenity for the residents of that complex, but to have a pool backed up right to your backyard is going to bring noise, you know, to the households.
Yeah, we, I especially am concerned about property value. Um, I don't want this building in any way to perform to impact our property value, and there's definitely that potential there. Um, you know, I'm thinking long-term, I'm thinking resale, I'm thinking for the, the value of the community, um, and that's something that I am, I guess, a bit anxious about.
Yeah, I think the last thing that I'll just add in is, um, you know, when we chose Ferndale out of all cities in metro Detroit, we picked it for the way the city cares about its families and residents. Um, I think it's head over heels ahead of all the other communities that I've lived in. Um, so I just ask you to consider, you know, if your family lived where we are, what would you guys feel if, you know, a, a complex four stories tall would be going in your backyard? And we're mixing in now families with, you know, possible to be determined residents, not saying that bad residents wouldn't have been, um, but the possibility of, you know, people throwing parties right in your backyard, overlooking your property, you know, how would that make you feel? So that's all I have. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Ferndale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
The next person, uh, is John Oliver.
Welcome.
Hi there. Um, this is actually his wife Carolyn Oliver on the phone. Um, I must have signed into his Google. Um, I actually live on Horton Street, which, uh, is one street further to the east uh, than Minerva Street and more towards the south side. I'm specifically curious about the vacant land there that is bordering, um, Minerva and Bermuda Street, and if there's any plans to develop that in the future as well as the Iron Ridge District.
I was muted. Sorry, Carolyn, will you say it again? The vacant land at Bermuda and what was the other, and Horton?
Uh, Bermuda and Minerva.
Got it, got it, got it. So sort of that, um, triangle shaped.
Yes, the Bermuda Triangle.
Oh, I love that. Thank you. Got it. Thank you so much. Other questions and comments?
Yep, the next one is Sally.
Welcome, Sally.
Hi, uh, I, I'm the husband, and I'm at, uh,
Welcome Sally's husband.
Yeah. Um, at thirty-two oh five Bermuda, and, uh, we're business owners there. And the, uh, we've been living through the last couple of years, the metamorphosis of the, uh, area. And, um, I want to give the guys a kudos as to what a nice job they've been doing, um, how respectful they've been, how they've, uh, communicated well and, uh, really looked out for our concerns. And if I was to say anything, uh, uh, pretty much everybody said it, uh, it was just a traffic concern, and it could probably be fixed if you made it three lanes instead of two, or, I don't know, I'm not an engineer that way. But, uh, that's about it. Uh, I'm sure it's going to, uh, their idea is, uh, going to end up being beautiful because they've done a really nice job with what they've had so far. So that's, uh, that's my two cents. Thanks a lot for the opportunity.
Thanks for joining us.
At this time, I do not see any additional hands raised, nor do we have any call-ins.
All right. Let us begin working through.
Hello. Sorry.
Sorry, excuse me. Oh, did we miss someone?
Yeah, Stacy Gaby, is she on there?
Welcome. I see you.
Okay, so I live on the Bermuda Triangle.
They don't, oh, what's happening?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we hear, yeah, so you're, you're at Bermuda and Minerva?
I'm on the Bermuda Triangle. Um, that's, that's where I reside. At thirty fifty-three Minerva, right?
Thank you.
Okay. So is the same developer that's doing his apartments the one that's doing the Iron Ridge Row, um, complex?
Yes.
Okay. So do you know about the train wreck that they have paused on the community with their dance studio? Has anybody been informed about that?
You can share whatever comments you'd like, and then we'll ask the developer to respond. So I'm,
So, so I've spoken with the developer, and I personally have probably called the police on the dance studio forty times because the dance studio, for one, which was never supposed to open, has been open during the pandemic, ignoring the, ignoring the mask ordinance, we're shipping children from high schools, taking pictures with no masks, um, outside of the studio. But the biggest issue is the sound. I can hear the dance studio up in my shower with the shower running on. It sounds like there's a hip hop party outside my front door. The police have been called numerous times. I've been working with, I spoke with Justin Lyons, but, uh, and he has stopped returning my calls. I've been speaking with Adam Loomis, who is speaking with the city attorney about rewriting the sound code because it is insane. One of the neighbors down the street has just retired from the Southfield Police Department, could not spend any time in her backyard due to the sound. And I've spoken with the Iron Ridge District numerous times, said they were going to handle the problem. And the woman that's running the studio basically thinks that no laws apply to her, and she doesn't care about the community. That's what the precedent of the Iron Ridge Row District development is setting. So whatever has been going on with this is only going to escalate because they don't care. Obviously, you can feel my frustration because this has been going on since the end of July, and they were, for one, never supposed to be open. I've spoken with numerous municipalities or, 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 let's just say numerous organizations that couldn't really do anything. I know she's been sent letters from certain places saying that they're violating the, the order. They're planning on opening up in ten days, and I know the sound is going to continue. And the neighbors and myself are going to be calling the police on a daily basis again.
Thank you. We'll definitely, you've got the developers on, on the record here tonight, so we will definitely follow up on that.
I, I, I wouldn't mind hearing a response from them.
Absolutely. Other questions and comments? Was there anyone else who wanted to make a comment, but maybe, uh, wasn't able to use the, um, wasn't able to use the chair, uh, raise hand function? You can always just wave. Um, just let us know. All right, let us work through some of these questions. Um, I want to start with, for the city, talk to me about Bermuda Street. It is definitely in need of resurfacing. I certainly know that it has a lot of, of truck traffic. Um, you know, other, other things in that industrial district that, that, that give it a lot of wear and tear. But can you talk with us a bit about any plans for, um, upkeep, updates, resurfacing, rebuilding of Bermuda Street?
Absolutely. Um, so in the fall, the last schedule I saw is that Bermuda was slated to get resurfaced, uh, this year, this summer. So, uh, like I said, I'm just getting back in the office, so I will double check with DPW and confirm that. But that was the last schedule I heard, uh, so.
Summer twenty twenty-one, you mean?
This summer, yes.
Excuse me, sorry. Um, so currently Bermuda Street is on a resurfacing schedule for summer twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
Correct.
And that is accurate. I just received, um, the updated, um, resurfacing map, and it is on for, um, the springtime.
Thank you. Uh, knowing that there may be construction then down the road, um, how does the city typically, you know, coordinate those types of things? So they've just resurfaced a street, and now you've got construction vehicles? And can you talk a little bit about how that process works, Justin?
Yeah, uh, so typically with any new development, particularly when there's a new road or new sidewalk involved, um, developments do have to pay, have a construction escrow, um, where our engineering inspectors, they're going out to check out the road, but they're also checking out new projects, you know, where, uh, underground work is being done, where trucks are going to be. Um, so there's, our engineers put an estimate on, you know, where that project is being done, uh, what the value of the project is and what the value of the road that's being resurfaced. Uh, so that's definitely factored in. Uh, we just had to do that, uh, for a project on Woodward Heights where Woodward Heights was just being done. And so, uh, yeah, it's something where we have a close, uh, you know, working relationship with the development team. Uh, and I'm not sure the construction timeline for this, but yeah, I would think that, uh, the majority of the road construction would be complete.
Through the chair.
Sure, Cosman.
Can, can I ask further questions on this?
Sure.
Uh, so with a project like this, they're most definitely going to be opening up the road in order to tie into utilities. So would it be safe to say that, um, there's a possibility if we do the road this year, it's going to be torn up again, but they will be responsible for doing any repairs to, to do the road back to the way it was once we did, once we completed the construction of it?
Correct. Um, Bermuda Street's a good example of that for this summer where, uh, new development happened at the corner of,
Do you mean Woodward Heights?
Uh, well, well, uh, Bermuda and East, or excuse me, uh, Burdette and East Rayton. Yep, was also, um, um, medical marijuana project, and they did have to tap into the road. And so they, um, did have to abide by all the city's requirements for how that road would be, uh, put back and have to provide a deposit in case, you know, they said, or they put it in poorly and we had to redo it. Um, so we do have those types of safeguards in place.
Okay. I, I guess my other question would be, would it be better to align the resurfacing of the road with their construction so that the people within the community, the neighborhood, don't have to, um, endure a, you know, several months this year of construction and then have to deal with more months and, and possibly a year of, of, you know, building construction? And then more time of road construction, um, i- is, is that a better bet? Is that, is that something that we can arrange?
Happy to talk to DPW about it and see. I believe that the bid, uh, Bermuda, I think, was included in the construction, road construction bid.
The whole package that we approved?
Yeah. Um, and again, I'm just coming back, so I'm just catching up on things. But, um, so I don't know if DPW would want to say, you know, it might be more expensive in the future. So, um, let me, you know, before I talk and say things I don't know about, let me talk to DPW, and, uh, that's an answer we can have. Come back, um, whenever this comes for a site plan.
Okay. Thank you Chair Baker for letting me interrupt you.
You can interrupt me whenever you want, Cosman. The next questions looks like are, are really all for the developers. So, um, uh, Jason, whether you want to take them or, or, uh, for Craig, you guys can decide who's best positioned.
I'll take the easy ones. Craig, you can take the hard ones.
Okay.
Sounds like a great relationship. The, we've got questions, um, about heights and about, um, shadow cast. So, uh, just to request that when you come back, because this is such a, a big elevation change, uh, when you come back, uh, if you can provide, um, some images of how shadows will be cast onto Minerva Street, that would be really helpful. Um, but also if you talk a little bit about building height, um, you've got it really pulled forward on the site, so the tallest part is away from those, those houses, but if you talk a bit about that, please.
That, that's exactly it. I mean, uh, we're very, very sensitive to that, and I appreciate those comments. And we, when we come in to design something, we, we absolutely try to do it right and be respectful neighbors. So we are within the allowable height for the ordinance. We are also pushing the building as far towards the street as we can. So what we plan on doing, I have notes here, I've got, So what we plan on doing, I have notes here, I've got notes from everybody. We will create a sun study, and we can share that. And we'll make sure that we do everything we can to lower that. What we did do also, we did increase some of the parapets along Bermuda, because we wanted to create some differentiation and book on the building and give it the ins and outs and the good look. But along the east side of the building, we lowered all the parapets to the bare minimum. And we did that so that it just meets code because of fall protection, things like that. But we also don't want to create height that hurts the neighbors to the east. So we're working within the law, and we're going to do everything we can to make it good. And we will demonstrate a sun study. We can do it, and it'll be accurate, and we can share that at the SPA if we're moving forward.
As currently proposed, how tall are you at the parapet and then at the back? What's that difference?
Yeah, so the parapet was 40, where did I go? 46 and a half? Or I mean, sorry, the roof. The building height was 44 foot six, so we're six inches under the maximum. And then the parapet, I think, was another, on the corners, I think it was another nine feet or eight feet above that. And then in the middle, the middle would be at 45.
Okay.
Three and a half feet, 42 inches means code. That's where it'd be.
And the highest points were just on the Bermuda roadside of the building.
Just on the anchors, correct, yeah. Which, there's no way that could impact me, but it's so far. I'm looking at an aerial, it's so far away. But we'll still show it on some study.
Thank you. And what would the estimated timeline be for construction?
You know, we would hope that we could be starting with construction maybe the fall of this year. And I would say the length of construction is approximately one year.
Yeah, right over there.
Thank you.
Push them.
I would be very impressed if it's a year.
Yeah.
Approximately, but it for sure won't be two.
That's what the contractor is going to say to get the job, and it's going to turn into 14 months, 16 months.
Yeah, something like that. Yes.
There is a note from Leanna about street signage that she observes on Tonmal. So maybe a conversation between you guys and the city, I'm not sure that we typically have any sort of off-site signage, but your property does go right up to that, the service drive. So if you're going to propose any signage, I'm sure Justin or Aaron can give you the brief on the sign ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, we recognize that wayfinding is a little bit difficult, more so for the former E-Prize Building, which is really then even buried further from Bermuda. You know, it seems that technology is solving a lot of that problem, because you give people directions with an address, and you tell them it's difficult to get to. You should, you know, put it in your phone and let it direct you. Once they get there once, they never have a problem the second time. But we recognize that wayfinding is difficult there and have been looking at different ways to improve it.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I could.
Sorry, Justin.
Yeah, I should have responded earlier about this, but I know the signs that were referenced as well, and those were included in the road construction project. Obviously, if the road construction were delayed, that's something that could go in beforehand, because I know exactly the issue that was referenced. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you. We've got questions about, and this would have been on my question list as well. Talk to me about the back of the building, essentially the east side, and sort of the windows and balconies. I believe that there are balconies on the east elevation as well. And, you know, I guess I'd be interested in talking about screening along that back parking area and how to keep some, keep the light and noise and any trash that comes in the parking area out of neighbors' yards. But also, when it comes to, now you've got neighbors up higher than you are, talk to us about people looking into our backyards and any accommodations you can make for that.
Sure. So that's why we held a green belt, so that we could get some greenery there. And now the balconies are on the back, you know, they're five by six, I think. They're not meant to party on there, just meant to kind of, maybe there's a chair or two, something like that. So, you know, we're sensitive to that. We made sure that they're limited as much as possible. And it's something that I don't think it would be really impacted. We moved the building as far to the west as we could. And it seems like, I guess, we do it all the time and have never had any problems in the past, so.
What about noise from the pool in the parking area? Is there, I don't know if it's even permitted, but all I ask, is there any plan for like amplified outdoor noise? You're not having like music and swim meets and stuff. This is, I grew up in Pleasant Ridge with a pool that always had amplified outdoor noise conversations. So we're asking this. How big is this pool? How is it going to be used?
This might be a bit of a crazy question, but I was just saying, from my experience, typically these types of amenities are regulated, and they shut down at a certain time, they're controlled, they're monitored, you know. So Craig, if you want to, you know, expand on that, but these are things that you have, and it's just something that if there's a complaint, you deal with it.
Right. They're not open at night. You know, we have very strict rules at all of our communities in terms of how they're accessed, when they're closed. We will, of course, have residents living right above it, you know, with windows right out there. So the first people that would be offended would be our own residents. They will be the closest people to it. But it's really, we will have a screen wall between the residential and our community with room for landscape screening as well. And then at the suggestion of the planners, that we originally had one long row of the parking, covered parking, and we split it up so we had room for taller trees in between to break up the view in the back. You know, I think that, you know, I can't say that they won't see the building, because people will see the building. And, but I think that it'll be a beautiful building. And then in terms of the noise and everything else, I think it actually becomes a buffer between the commercial, office, industrial development, which is the Iron Ridge Development, and the residential on Horton and, I think, Minerva and the other streets back there.
That's a good point. That was even in the ordinance about creating, that's why there's an R3, was to create a buffer between an R1 and a higher intense use. And so it's filling that role.
Where will visitors park? And will any of the parking kind of be integrated into things happening across the street? It looked like there's maybe parking on both sides of the street can overflow, go across the street, rather than on the side streets, Jason?
We're actually overparked. And one of the comments from staff was, you know, can you knock some out? So we wanted to make sure we had not only enough parking for, obviously, people living there, but guests. So the grand total is 161, and what's required is 151. That's with 10 guest parking spaces per the ordinance.
It's also, we have, you know, we control all of the commercial development across the street, and our parking lots will be integrated into walkways and pedestrian crossings. So the logical overflow place, especially given the fact that the parking lot would be crowded in an apartment building during times of the day and on weekends when the commercial uses are the least active. So it's just sort of a logical overflow place. There wouldn't be any openings between our parking lot and the neighbors. It will be fully screened. So the one, the least convenient place for anybody to ever park would be on Minerva, because then they'd have to walk all the way around to get to our development.
And we had a question about vacant land at Bermuda and Minerva. I don't know if you guys control that, and if you've got development plans, if you do.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr., there's sort of three triangles. I think Mr. Gaby, if I'm saying that right, lives in the house that is on one of the triangles. And then the two other vacant triangles, yes, we do control them. And actually, I have Jason currently looking at what could be done with those sites. On a, I think, on one site, Jason thinks that we might do a single-family home, and on the other site, maybe a few units in terms of townhomes, possibly attached. All of that would be for sale, not for rent. But we have no current plans. We've just begun to look at it.
And you had a number of neighbors, I talked about you guys being good neighbors, and then we had one who definitely, and I saw some nodding heads, has a bad neighbor issue with one of your tenants. So because you're both here, I'd like you guys to be able to talk to each other in this forum. There was a dance studio issue, sound issue?
Yeah, listen, I have heard about it. So I can't say that I haven't heard that it's.
Angela didn't speak to you. I spoke to Angela four or five times, and then I stopped communicating because she said it was going to be taken care of, and it wasn't.
All right.
I said that I've heard about it, so yes, Angela did tell, I don't know who told me, but somebody did tell me that some of the neighbors have expressed concern about it. It's a new, I don't know if you are familiar, but a dance studio recently opened on Bermuda, adjacent to Airmaster Heating and Cooling, in a separate building. But it's a two-tenant building. It's part of Iron Ridge. And it does have a roll-up door that opens to a dance studio.
Right.
I believe that there are, there are noise, a noise ordinance or restrictions in your community. The tenants are required to comply with all local ordinances.
Well, being required to comply with the ordinance and being a terrible neighbor, you should have, I have a discussion with the man who owns the air compressor place, because I just had a conversation with him the other day. He tried talking to her about the parking. They park it in his lot, and the noise is driving him crazy. The noises, when they open the door on the side of the building, it's a speaker cone directed at the houses on the Bermuda Triangle. My wife went over with a police sergeant to try to get her to turn it down. She refused to do that. And then the police officer wrote her a citation for being open during the ordinance, because he's like, this should not be happening. I fully understand your frustration. And that's why I tried to handle it with Angela. She said she was sending over the property manager to take care of it. It was quiet for a couple of days, and then the next day, I can hear the bass thudding inside of my house.
All right, thanks, Mr. Gaby. Mr. Singer, what's the best way to continue this conversation? It's not typically something we do at Planning Commission, but you're both here. So what's the next step? It sounds like Mr. Gaby's been in touch with the city.
You know, we don't control that. I don't know what the answer is.
You don't control your tenants?
Well, we.
We can stop trying to have this on, I can meet with you, and we can have a face-to-face conversation. And maybe I can bring some more of the other neighbors that are concerned, and we can try to hash this out.
All right, we've got.
I'm available to talk to you. You can call me anytime. I'm not trying to run away from this issue. I understand it's an issue. You know, I think that like every business in the community, there are requirements. You know, there was a steel plant that was operating in that building for many, many years. They had a whole host of other pollution and noise and other issues that, you know, are required to be dealt with in terms of how you operate your business.
So just to bring a conclusion to this, Mr. Gaby, do you have contact information for Mr. Singer?
If someone can give that to me, or I can look it up, or however you want to proceed.
All right, Mr. Singer, how would you like us to get that contact information, Mr. Gaby?
Well, I could just give it to you. My email address is c.singer@milford, M-I-L-F-Lake-Frank-O-R-D, singer, S-I-N-G-E-R-C-O dot com. And my office phone number is 248-646-4499. And any of the other neighbors that are welcome to that information as well. You know, we aren't hiding and are available to talk to people. We can't solve every problem, but we certainly can try.
Thank you very much. We always encourage people to talk with their neighbors before big site plans come to the Planning Commission. So this discussion item was one step, but it sounds like there's now a personal connection that can happen on a related issue. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thanks.
Yep. All right, so we've had some updates from the city on infrastructure. That's going to be work that's going to be happening in this area. And we've got some elevations and layouts proposed before us. So I wanted to, oh, there we go, wanted to take questions and comments from the Planning Commission. Who would like to kick us off?
Can I just add one more piece to the, to answer one of it? Well, there's two things. One is, in terms of the timing of rebuilding Bermuda, just as a developer who often is dealing with road reconstruction, I generally say the sooner the road can be built, I hate putting it off, because then budgets change and something else becomes a priority. So I'm usually, if I'm involved, I want the road built as soon as possible, even though it means that all of my repairs and connections will be much more expensive, much more difficult for me to rebuild, and I'll be held to a much higher standard. You know, I still think that the sooner things get done, the better it is for the neighbors, the better it is for the community. So that would be my comment on the road. In, the disruption that a residential development makes is pretty modest. You know, we just rebuilt, and the neighbors know. We rebuilt all of the infrastructure at Iron Ridge or completed most of the site work, which is the heaviest and dirtiest of all of the work. That was done, for the most part, this summer. And there's very, you know, it has very little impact on the public roads. It's mostly the construction is confined to the site. And then the only other comment I wanted to respond to is, in terms of property values, I think there's very good comps that would suggest that this development will improve the property values in the neighboring areas. And I would tell you to like, look at the Harrison Project, which is just in Royal Oak, up sort of around Bermuda as you go into Royal Oak. And it's an upscale residential development right on public streets. And I think it's had a huge beneficial impact on the single families surrounding it. It's also sort of tied into the railroad track as well. Those are just the only two other comments I wanted to respond. Um, those are just the only two other comments I wanted to respond to, a list of things that were brought up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through, through the chair, uh, if I could just add, the city usually, i- in the past, there's been other developments around town where, um, we typically have moved forward with road construction just in case the development doesn't happen. Um, cause there could be a chance of losing a good lower price on asphalt or something like that. Um, and if the development doesn't happen, then, uh, we could face an increase or something like that, or, or have budget issues, push a project down the road. So just something, uh, to think about and we'll talk with EPW and get, uh, more clarity on that.
Do the chairman may follow up with a question?
Yes, please.
Um, Justin, do you know if in those cases, um, and I know that you said that you're definitely concerned of a project not happening, but in those cases, do you use site plans that may be approved? So for in this instance, if, um, they come back next month and their site plans are approved and then construction starts, you know, a couple of months later, but their construction has not yet started, would you use the site plans to align driveways to provide those, um, openings to prevent future changes?
Absolutely. Um, that Burdette project I referenced, Burdette and East Strayton, uh, we luckily, uh, that project was far enough along that we were able to adjust some things in the road construction plans, which, uh, ended up making the sidewalk be a lot more pedestrian friendly. Um, and, uh, just made for a, a better experience overall. So for, sometimes we are fortunate and it does work out that way.
Thank you. All right. Oh, yep. Commissioner Brasing, please.
Uh, it's Commissioner Brasing. Um, I technically, this is my neighborhood. Um, so I, I wanted to say, you know, I appreciate, uh, all the work that everyone's been doing on the improvements here. I might be just outside of the radius, uh, to have been included on any information. Uh, so I had kind of a two-part question. Um, when my first impression at looking at the drawings, I, I appreciate that you're trying to follow all of the ordinances. I, I did have a sense that, that the building was quite long. Um, and although following within the height restrictions, I, I did wonder about the impact on the residents on Minerva. Uh, so the second part of the question, uh, would be, first part of the discussion is, is the length of the building. The second part of the conversation would be, um, I didn't know what kind of interaction with the community you may have had, or if there were any discussions that were had. Um, I just, I may have missed the notice or, or been outside of that radius.
Is it Craig?
Oh, you're muted.
Now, can you hear me?
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm not the most technological savvy person around.
No worries. Thank you.
Uh, it, it, the, um, uh, I, I, I think that, that it was my understanding that this is sort of like an introduction to, uh, both the community and the public. Other than a couple of meetings with, uh, the planners, you know, this is where we are sort of, um, studying our proposal and offering to get insight and understand and answer questions and understand concerns that, that both the neighborhood and any of the commissioners might have or suggestions. We, we've incorporated many of the suggestions that the planners had into the plans that you're seeing and are certainly, um, um, happy to look at any other suggested items. Having, splitting the building is something that we looked at and, and, and found that, um, both economically in terms of having to duplicate multiple stairwells and elevator banks and, uh, that it also provided for a different kind of a development. It didn't allow for sort of the high amenity, uh, development where, where you would have sort of, uh, uh, I, I, I don't want to say concierge level of service, but you have like a maintenance person that, that will take your own, take out the trash and you have, uh, maintenance and trash chutes. And we would have like a, a major central kind of delivery station where all of the delivery services would have access to, uh, to cold freezers, refrigerators, um, uh, for, uh, supermarket deliveries, uh, FedEx and UPS would have direct access into storage, uh, stations in the building. So, you know, there, there's a lot of things that are done in high amenity residential developments today that are really attractive to, to people that rent. And, and it's much more attractive in so, in a single building where it can all be done in one place. So that, that's why we, we wanted to build one building and, uh, and, and get the number of units that, that we could make sense of it.
And I'd like to add to that again, just to repeat, by bringing the building together, we reduce the footprint. And believe it or not, it gives us more green space. And that was one of the comments from staff. So I, I think it's a, a good idea to do what we're doing.
I, I appreciate that and I appreciate the additional green space. I, um, I tend to travel, uh, along Bermuda in that way. And, and I was, uh, driving down it the other day and, um, it, I was trying to, to envision, um, you know, the, that, the building mass, uh, and, and how it, it changes the, the character of that route. Um, I don't know how, and this is a discussion item. I don't know how any of the other commissioners feel. Um, I, I, that, that was one of my points though, one of my questions about just the, the length of the building, knowing that it does impact amenities and green space, um, but just, uh, how it, how it feels as a, a new element in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Commissioner Braga?
Through the chair. Um, well, first before I speak, I see that some of the nearby residents have been waiting a while to speak. I don't know if we want to give them another opportunity to say a few comments.
Oh, Aaron, have we got hands up?
Leanna and Sally.
Yeah, we do. I was, um, I don't know, before we were waiting to have the rest of the commission, um, weigh in. So I was just waiting for an appropriate time to.
Got it. Yep. Thanks for letting me know, uh, Commissioner Braga. We will finish our commission discussion. Um, and then I see Leanna and Sally that you've got hands raised. So we'll make sure to give you more, uh, discussion time.
Sure. So I wanted to address, uh, the length of the building. I actually am not opposed to long buildings. I think they can be well-designed. Um, I'm a big fan of modernist Dutch urban planning and the Dutch have a lot of long buildings in their cities, two to four stories, um, that actually have more coherent, but like in uniform facade designs that ironically, because of their uniformity, don't, like the building doesn't feel as oppressive. Could I share some slides that I've prepared? If that's okay? If I can share my screen?
Oh, well, that's a new one. Um, we don't, we don't typically do that. And I'm not sure if you've got, um, the ability to do that. I'd have to ask our.
I don't, I don't have screen sharing privileges, but. All right. Now I can. I spent a lot, lot of hours last night playing around.
Awesome.
Let's see. Well, I guess first I just wanted to quickly adjust the ground floor plan. I'm a big believer in really active, transparent, permeable ground floors. So I wondered first, so I know that there are those patio doors and the patios, um, but what if all the ground floor apartments had direct openings to the outdoors? That way the ground floor would feel less like the base of a hefty building and essentially almost like single-story townhouses. Um, I was even thinking, what if instead of thinking about the ground floor as a double-loaded corridor, it was sort of, um, like a building with multiple cores is what it would feel like on the ground floor and keeping the double-loaded up, uh, upstairs. You could retain the same number of storage units. Some of the garages would probably have to become carports. We could get larger units and you could even include a few three-bedroom units on the ground floor, which could be attractive, say to families with children who could then have that kind of like little front yard right in front. And then on, in terms of length and uniformity, so this is from my bike ride through the neighborhood this morning. I noticed immediately that the prevailing physical characteristic of the neighborhood is long buildings with uniform facade materials. So when I saw the rendering as proposed, I wondered whether the facade is too busy. I know it's been kind of a trend in American, um, planning boards and city planning and urban design since the nineties to advocate toward more facade variation. I, I would actually err on the side of facade simplicity and I want to show you why. So I explored eight different variations of adding doors to ground level units, moving and adding different facade elements. And I think some of them, um, I'm curious to hear the architect's take on this, might actually result in a more compelling facade. And sorry if this is counter to what, uh, planners, other planners have told you, because I know I'm a bit unorthodox in this regard. So first I want to make sure there are doors on the ground floor. And I know there's a lot of text, so I can send this to the development team afterward if you like. But this is a project in Cambridge, Massachusetts, where I lived earlier this year, where it's about the same length as the project that's being proposed and has a similar number of doors on the ground floor. And despite all the variation, it feels large. And I know this is a taller building than yours, uh, at Mark Cambridge. It, it felt really large because of the excessive variation. In contrast, I love this eight-story building in Columbus, Ohio, that doesn't feel like an eight-story building because all the ground level units have immediate access to the outdoors. There's kind of a single primary facade material and the motifs or the gestures for articulating the facade are limited. It's kind of that L shape, um, that happens throughout the building. And even here in Metro Detroit, we see that large buildings with uniform facades can be tremendously attractive. What I think makes the building a new center on the upper right slightly more offensive than the one on the left in downtown Detroit is because the ground floor is impermeable, but there aren't that kind of, it, it forces you to move along the building. And it, in that kind of, um, experience, like experience along the building, it, walking makes the building feel longer as a result. Whereas this very like top-heavy building in the Netherlands, because of its open ground floor, the heaviness and the uniformity of the building is almost excused. So I thought, okay, what if we take the facade and I say simplify the barbells on the end so that there's kind of like, it speaks of one materiality. And I thought, what if we removed the turquoise elements and it, the building gets kind of bland. And if we removed all the facade articulations, it's the most austere and almost academic variant of the building. But simplicity can be kind of undercut with vegetation, which is what Lafayette Park does so extraordinarily well and eloquently in Detroit. Um, those buildings are so simple on the outside in a sense, but they're so complex because of how they articulate what's inside and how the vegetation like undercuts that linearity. And buildings that try to do too much, I don't know if it feels like they're trying too hard or there's, um, the physical scale of the contrast and the materials like occurs in a sense where like this building, when I first saw it in Cincinnati, like sure, the, the massing is fine. When I saw it in person, I felt overwhelmed because there are all these layers of granularity, the undercut reading where the massing really happens on the facade. Whereas these buildings in the Detroit, uh, Medical Center District are tremendously direct in their architectural gesture. And I would argue are friendlier as a result. Um, same kind of thing with this building in Columbus, Ohio, one gesture repeated, one gesture repeated with these amazing little colorful variations. And then again in Detroit, the caterpillar, one slice repeated. And I mean, um, the developer like does so much with landscape here. And so I think, so for instance, what if the only facade variation was that turquoise accent? And that was just kind of repeated. And instead of trying to break up the buildings, because I, I, I get what you're saying when you say if you have three buildings laid out in a row, it'll really make the site feel long. What if that center were actually articulated? And by having these repeating turquoise themes, it reminded me of this amazing public housing project by Peter Barber in South London. So I have a few other variations here. I don't want to go too long, but I, I do think that kind of simplified one gesture on the facade repeated with lush vegetation in front, which I know you've got in your renders, um, could actually ironically, by simplifying the facade, make the building feel more like a single unit rather than trying to make it too variable. Thank you. I'd be curious to hear the architect's comments.
Thanks, Commissioner Braga. Um, I'm gonna ask you, cause, um.
That was cool. I liked it.
And thank you. Um, and would you forward, um, just real quick before we go on, uh, would you forward later this evening, um, any slides that you'd like included in the record? Cause I saw you had a few in there that you didn't show, um, to Aaron and Justin, uh, just so that we can make sure, uh, because we like to capture our commissioners' comments.
Us too.
Oh, and apparently they, they can get them to Jason and Craig. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I love, I mean, if I really quick, I mean, I loved how, and we had this, we've had some iterations, but I like, like the essence of what I loved about what you did was you took like almost at the middle point, you had that, that nice repetitious, that simple, you know, thing. And, and believe me, we've, we've been there and, and, uh, you know, when you're, a lot of times I'm just going to speak totally, uh, I feel sometimes when you deal with committees, you have to work with committees. So you, you come to a point, right? And, and, and you, and you make a beautiful product without, without everybody's input. And I think what you do is great. And I, I, I definitely want to take it, go back, talk, talk to the group, you know, Craig and, and see how we, I, it was really nice. It's very cool.
Thanks. I might even head down on costs. Well, I don't know about that. I just stayed up past my bedtime last night. No, I think it might be facade cost, because I know for every variation that, that's just like more money.
No, 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 for sure. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, uh, the, the only, the, the one thing though, that we, we have to adhere to is the order. You guys have to change ordinance. That, that's just crazy. That form-based ordinance has to go. I don't know why it is that. But, but, uh, but we did, we have to play with that and use it and work with that. So that's what we have to work with to make, to make the, the facade work in the front, which will create more, or death, but it limits designers. You know, that's why, uh, it's challenged. It's controversial to do a form-based code.
Well, that's always the trade-off, right? Is, is how much can you regulate and how much, you know, freedom and creativity do you give people? And, and what, what comes out of that, what comes out of that process? Um, and the hundred and fifty foot length, that's something that's been in our, our ordinance for a long time. We've waived it a couple of times recently, most notably, um, in two downtown projects, um, you know, which I think had, had varying results. Um, and those were mixed-use projects, so had more activity on the ground floor. I, my first instinct is, is not to do more waivers of hundred and fifty foot without activity on the ground floor. You know, it's so, if it's just kind of this wall of, of, you know, people's blinds and roller shades, that's, that's different than what Patrick just talked about. So.
That, that's exactly the key. You hit it. You hit it there. We, we just, we're wrapping up a project in Royal Oak. It's over three hundred feet long. It, in, in essence, it's flat, but it's broken up and we put all of the active uses on the ground floor. So it feels like a, like a, it's a great urban experience because there's activity, but it hugs the street. It's not, you're not forcing pieces of the building back that adhere to a code. So I'm sorry. I'm just talking.
That's all good. And, uh, through the chair, if I may add, um, Buffalo, New York, it, uh, they have what I think is a really high-quality form-based code that actually requires, um, in their main street district, doors every thirty feet. So I don't know if maybe we can, in Ferndale require doors every forty feet, which would achieve kind of tripling the number of doors versus what's currently proposed.
Right. Or, or all you have to do really to, to safeguard the city from a bad design, just to follow a code, is just say that the planning commission has the ability to, you know, make decisions. This is a guideline and then y'all can, can, uh, decide.
That is possibly the, the most authority any architects ever wanted to give a public commission.
I, I have faith in good decisions and, 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 you know, thought versus following a black and white, you know.
For whatever it's worth as a developer, I agree with it. I agree with Jason. You ha- you have the ability anyways. So why disguise it like that you don't? I, it, you know, I mean, it, we want, we want to get unanimous approvals.
Exa- exactly. And that's actually giving kudos to, to all you guys.
I know we've got Leanna and Sally, uh, waiting to ask a question. I'm going to see, um, first if there are any planning commissioners who either want to, um, uh, add on to or comment on what, uh, Patrick just shared.
So, so through the chair again, um, if I could, I just didn't want to miss it in my notes. I also wanted to touch on some of the comments from the Yuga family, if you don't mind. Um, this coming from, uh, someone who's lived in Southwest Florida, in the Northeast, now in the Midwest and in Brazil and kind of grew up in different housing typologies and in apartments. Um, I totally hear you on the question of privacy and, um, having kind of that space for raising your family. And I was thinking, okay, so four-story sounds like a big difference. Maybe it's, it might not be. There's something about larger buildings that like when you're closer to them or when you're farther from them, it's hard or it's easier to hide them from sight. So for instance, with the carports that are going to be along the back of the apartment site, combined with a tree canopy, that might be enough. combined with a tree canopy, that might be enough for most of the year, especially when the trees are there, to shield off, like a child playing in the backyard, from view for most of the fourth-story apartments. I'm thinking Ferndale certainly has three-story houses next to two-story houses. Four stories might even be where some of the peaks of roofs for older houses might reach. So the difference between four and two might not be, like, versus if it were eight stories and two, for instance. So I think that if you plant trees in your backyard and maybe have, like, a privacy fence, that combined with all the screening that's already gonna happen on your apartment side, might be sufficient to hold off on, like, making it feel like your privacy isn't true at all.
Michael, do you mind giving me your address, so I can just look at where your house is compared on the site?
3207 Minerva.
Correct, yes. Thank you.
3207?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Baker, if I may?
Missing, who is it? Commissioner Hagfor, yes, please.
Yep, so I don't have a presentation, unfortunately, so sorry about that. But I was actually, the point that Commissioner Braga brought up about the external entrances to the sidewalk, I was actually gonna make a similar comment. And that would also kind of address a little bit to Mr. Flores's comment about having more activated sidewalk. If you have everyone entering and exiting from the corner of the building, you almost have a total dead sidewalk there. But having exterior entrances, our actual, like, doors instead of sliders, may get more activity on the sidewalk. You may have more people entering and exiting. And obviously, your landscape plan will do a lot, too, to also soften up the space and make it more vibrant. And I really think that adding on street trees along Bermuda really help also with managing the speed of traffic that's gonna be coming. Because obviously, you don't have increased traffic from the building. But when you add the street tree, it's gonna make those streets seem smaller. So once you redo the street, you may have an initial speedup of not many potholes that you have to avoid. So cars may drive a little bit faster, but once you add the street trees, that'll make it a little more cozy, and people may slow down a little bit more naturally. One of the questions I did have, I did like the addition of the crosswalk from the building to the development. And this may be a question for Justin, actually. What kind of components gonna be part of that crosswalk? Is it gonna be, like, lit beacons? Is it just gonna be markings and help that people stop? Is that even been a thought yet, or?
They've never seen it.
Okay.
So, Justin brought that up. I remember that, you said you guys are gonna connect the two sides, remember that? Yeah, yeah, you wanted to.
But I didn't see how, I didn't see how nice it would look, or see how nice it would look, until now. But, so at the time, it was just gonna be striped. So this particular resurfacing is, you know, very, is what, is there really resurfacing? You know, staff would like to add, you know, a pedestrian beacon or something like that there in the future. Because of the budget, we weren't able to add, but really anything extra at this time. But I think if I could plug our Ferndale Moves Mobility Plan that the city's working on, there's still time to make comments. And I would definitely suggest anybody who's interested to talk about Bermuda Street and the needs that are there, because, you know, it just, with the current budget right now, we were not able to really do much of anything that we would normally like to do.
How much is that, a pedestrian crossing that's upgraded? Like, what do you budget for that?
The, it usually depends, but for, I think most recently, it was, there's a range of $25,000 to $40,000 for that particular beacon. But they, I do think it would be pretty effective there.
Thank you. Who was just talking, Dustin? Commissioner Hagfor, anything else?
Yep, well, and then just one kind of follow-up comment. So I, like I said, I do appreciate how you guys have it anchored towards Bermuda for the height, and then it kind of reduces as it gets further back. And I'm interested to see how the plans develop based on these comments and whatnot. But I do think that you guys have a good starting foundation that you're working on. And I'm just excited to see where you guys go from here. So thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Justin, what do you mean by beacon?
I could, I could send you an example. But it basically is things that we have on Nine Mile, they're lit-up signs that are, they can be push-button activated. You can add, like, additional signs in the cross, the middle of the crosswalk, that tell people to yield to pedestrians and that sort of thing. And so that's initially what we wanted for this particular crosswalk.
Send me an example, please. Thank.
Thank you. All right, other planning commissioners at this time?
This is Commissioner Foster.
Mr. Foster, yep.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to all the residents who joined today for this discussion, to provide your feedback. It's really helpful, and we really appreciate you being engaged in the process. And I encourage you to remain engaged throughout the process of this development. And then also looking at editing the master plan, I believe, this year. And so I hope that you engage in that process as well. I have two comments slash question, or a question regarding the site plan. And the first one would be, it looks like the buffer, which I think is probably required by ordinance, but it looks like it's maybe five foot wide. Just in terms of when you're looking at your landscaping plan, I would implore you to look at the width of that to ensure that we could have sufficient height trees along that. And I would encourage the city staff, if, you know, if we think that that's not sufficient in these sorts of instances, that we need to look at that in terms of editing our zoning plan in the future. Secondly, I think we had this question, or I had this question, at last month's meeting, I'm forgetting which one. But in terms of having parking within a front yard, or between the front lot line and a building, and I don't know, Aaron, were you able to follow up on that? Or did we, was that removed from the zoning ordinance, did we find out?
I think, because this is in regards to the Ardmore item that was with the parking to the side.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. Yeah, so when we were reviewing that one, based on where the parking was located for that, it wasn't located within the front yard, technically. So similarly, I don't, I mean, this, we haven't had a site plan, and we don't know exactly the dimensions for anything for this, but it would be something that we would review to make sure it's compliant.
Right, and I think the language I was remembering from the zoning ordinance prior, and to be honest, I suppose I could be mixing it up with somebody else's zoning ordinance. But I thought that we had in our zoning ordinance, whereas, even if it wasn't in a front yard particularly, but it was in between the front lot line and the building. But it looks like that, that was potentially removed from the ordinance. So I just want to verify, because the only thing that I was looking at, I really like the design and a lot of the thought and effort that's been put into the site plans. One thing, though, and I know that Ten Mile is a service drive, and it's along the highway. However, that's a fairly prominent corner that we're just having parking at. And so in terms of our zoning ordinance, again, on this lot, this particular site, it doesn't seem like it's an issue. But for future development and potentially other properties, I was just wanting to know if that's within our ordinance. And I guess that's my only concern. Nothing, I don't think, for, for the development team necessarily to worry about, but.
Through the chair, we can double-check. I believe that the most recent changes were, regarding parking in the front yard, were more for mixed-use districts and central business districts. And so since we haven't updated our, any of the residential districts in recent time, I think that that's just, it's been on our list, but we'll go back and double-check.
And nobody else remembers this? I swear that we, it was, it was in the residential areas and it was in the ordinance, but I believe, it looks like it's been removed, because I can't find it. But maybe, again, if nobody else remembers it, it could.
Is that a, are you talking about a requirement to have parking in a front yard?
Yeah, the opposite, sir. Yeah, and I think Commissioners are, was gonna agree.
Well, I know, I know for sure that was our intent in commercial, so that, in that situation. So I know for sure we had that identified, but I don't recall if residential, if it ever was in there, or if it ever came up. So it'd be worth looking at, if that's our intent.
But we're not proposing any, right?
You've got some in the side yard. I think what, when you send in the site plan, what Aaron and Justin will look at is some of the dimensions of where things are located in relation to your setbacks.
Got it.
I may just add on, and I believe that on a corner lot, as such, with the Ten Mile frontage, that serves as a second front.
Frontage, yeah.
Well, we held back the, we actually eliminated an entrance from that Ten Mile, so that we could have, like, a landscape buffer there.
Thank you.
Right, so that's landscaped, and then across the street on the corner, we're looking at doing something really nice, sort of landscaping and signage for Iron Ridge. So we're sensitive to that, and we're gonna make sure it's a very nice entrance coming into that district.
All right, planning commissioners or Councilman Polica? Anyone else have questions or comments? Yep, please.
I do. So I'd also like to thank all the residents for participating and sharing your thoughts and your opinions. And that's the great thing about democracy, is everybody has the opportunity for a voice. I also want to thank Councilor, Commissioner Braga, for the first time I've ever seen presentations from a commissioner. Awesome. And so it makes my questions look like blah. So I'm just gonna go through my usual, my usual list, which is location of utility meters, the gas, water, electric meters. Are those gonna be located scattered throughout the exterior of the building? Is there gonna be interior rooms specifically for all the meters? How is that gonna be handled?
Water will be completely inside, gas is usually located in a central location on the outside, electric's all inside.
Okay, so there's not gonna be meters that are gonna be on the front of the house inside of the?
No, 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 absolutely not. No, no, no.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, no, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that. And then we're planning on a transformer located in the back of the, we have an island in the back. So we have a lead that we have to get over there, we have to work through all those details, but we want to keep all that stuff hidden, so that it's not, we don't want anything, you know, that's not sightly along the front of the building.
Or, or the sides.
Correct, yeah, correct.
The location of air conditioning units, are those gonna be on the roof? Are those gonna be individual for the apartments, or?
Yep, so these units right now, they're gonna be, they'll likely all be furnaces, or maybe a split between heat pumps and furnaces. The condensers will be up on the roof, and they'll all be screened, and they'll be on isolators, so that they control vibrations and stuff like that.
Okay, and, and they'll be shielded sound-wise, especially from the east?
Yes.
So that residents don't hear their backyard, all these air conditioner units going off?
No, they're more likely to hear their neighbor's AC going off than this, that's for sure.
Excellent. This, I think, probably goes to Justin. We were talking about the road, and, and, you know, I'm one of those politicians that, you know, would rather have people do it the right way than the way that I would want it. So if we gotta do it, and then they have to pay for it to be, I'm all fine for that. I'd rather do it right than do it my way. But in regards to speed, because there's going to be more activity on the street, you're probably going to experience more people driving faster. And in this type of situation, you know, if we, if it was a residential street, a typical residential street, you could have people petition to get a speed hump installed if the speed got out of hand. But in this situation, how would you really handle something like this? If, if people within the neighborhoods start noticing that there's just a lot of speed going on this street, how would that be handled?
You're saying on Bermuda and Minerva, Minerva, or just Bermuda?
Well, I can't, I can't really experience it on Minerva, only because it's already blocked in. There's only, it's a one-way, really a one-intrance street, you know. Most of the traffic is probably gonna be on Bermuda anyways. I can't imagine too many people parking on Minerva and then walking all the way around the block to go to the apartment building, when they could just park across the street. And the parking lots, you know, the parking that's gonna be for the Iron Ridge development.
Sure. I can't remember the width of Bermuda off the top of my head, but, you know, when, when we thought we had more budget, I, my ideal scenario was, you know, it is a little bit, you need, Bermuda means to be a little bit wider because of construction, or not construction, but, you know, industrial, in commercial vehicles. But I, you know, I think that the ideal scenario would be, it needs to be a little bit more narrow, if you really want to slow speeds, and if you want to make it safe for pedestrians, that, you know, that crosswalk, and potentially another one, would make sense. And probably putting, having some additional protection, like a bump out around those crosswalks, is really like the ideal treatment, probably with green stormwater infrastructure. And, you know, if we had a limited budget, that's what I would do. And so, you know, I'm happy to go talk with DPW again and see if there's other, you know, things that we can supplement. Again, it's been a little while since we've had that conversation. But I think it is, in my opinion, Bermuda is part of the regional bike route as well. And so like, riding a bike there, especially with the tore-up pavement, it's not comfortable, because the road's too wide.
I see you, Stacy, I'll get you after Leanna and Sally, thanks.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, no, that's, that really, that's really, thank you, Jason. Yeah, I, I agree, and, you know, if we do resurface the road, and they come in and do the development after, maybe, you know, they'll be nice enough to maybe add some of those elements that we would like, you know, as a, you know, a nice thank you to the city.
We would appreciate that.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a couple residents with comments or questions. Was there anything else from the planning commission at this time? All right, Commissioners are?
Yeah, thank you. Just to follow up on Councilman Polica's comments, and you're sharp on all these mechanical units, and where they're screened and all that. I wanted to just follow up on that, because they're not shown. And one of the things when I pass Ferndale House is that, you know, there's all these little ventilator units, which provide, you know, unique, individual control for each apartment unit, but those never show up on the renderings. And I know there's other ways of doing it, so that you don't have many rubbers smattered across the building. So I just appreciate that we're thinking about mechanical and screening and that type of thing, and would really appreciate those kind of details to show up when we're reviewing a plan, because I think they really do matter. It's an additional element that we have to look at on the building. And it's not a condenser, it's not, it's not a meter, but it's still something that we might want to have an input on that design part of it. Just an observation. I guess one other thing is, is for the neighborhood, I've ridden many times from Royal Oak down along Bermuda, both singly with groups and a lot of people. So that, that is actually kind of another pretty popular bike pathway, when you don't want to ride across Main Street or Hilton. So I think this would be a good, a good addition to the neighborhood, but respecting that there's a lot of bike traffic through there, too. So that's it, just my observations, thanks.
Thank you, thanks, Krista. All right. Oh, sorry, Jason.
Just really quick, just respond back. So on Ferndale House, those are VTEC units, so they get all of their fresh, like, they're literally plugged into the exterior wall. We're not doing that, so you won't have those. You will have vents on the outside, but they're gonna be the small guys, and they just blend in with the facade. So, yeah, I'm not a fan of those either.
All right. All right, I'm gonna come back around to, where's, oh, I see Leanna Sullivan, put her hand up.
Hello again, everyone. Thank you to everyone for coordinating this and for sending these notices, that was really great. I just had a couple comments, because I'm really concerned about Bermuda, because all of the side streets over here are dead ends, so it's really our main access to 696. Otherwise, we have to go loop around and go down other side streets. So just wanted to present my concern and my eagerness to have Bermuda repaved. So just wanted to present my concern and my eagerness to have Bermuda repaved. And just keeping in mind that us residents have these dead end streets. So the quicker that construction can be resolved, we would really appreciate that. And I think that was it. Just a little extra touch on Bermuda. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us tonight. We've also got Mr. Sally Colmish waiting. Welcome back.
I guess I'm a Bermuda concern too. I just want to make sure you guys, I guess this is directed at the city, the, Justin. Just to back a truck into our truck well, we'll back up four or five cars on each side of the truck as we're backing it in the well. And that's, this is in, when everybody's sick can really not work in. And you know, we're going to add a lot more car traffic. I just want to make sure you guys make the right decision. I guess I was really happy with, you were saying you're going to narrow the street and you're going to put trees to make it work better. That's important. And then I don't know how the sewer is going to work because when it rains a lot, we get back up on the sewer. So I don't know how your sewer is, if it's just tie-ins or if everything's working that way. But like I said, I'm, I'm seeing 100 more cars going in and out every morning, plus all the ones cutting through. So I think it's really important for you, Justin, to, to help get that money for the bumps or the speed bumps or the crosswalks. Because I'll tell you how it works. It's working really perfect for me as a business owner on that street because it slows the traffic down. Once you pave it, you're going to have a police officer sitting at the end because that's how they slow it down. It's a, it's a full-time business for them to sit there and slow it down. And nobody, when I first started there, no, people would stop and let you walk across. They don't do that anymore. And it's giddy up down that street. So just so you know, it makes sense. And the presentation by Patrick was pretty awesome. Mr. Stinger's got some great ideas. My, my questions are, would be, does it have to be 94 people to make sense money-wise? And does it have to be four floors for the neighborhood? So I guess you guys have already figured that out. Let's go back to Bermuda. That's, that's my two cents on Bermuda. Narrowing it down, put your trees, put an extra crosswalk in so that people aren't all squeezed into the one. Because it's a pretty tough ride. And then like, like bicycles know, it's, it's pretty tough stuff. But from my perspective, like I said, now there isn't really that many cars. Just backing in the truck well, four or five cars on either side will be waiting. So take that in consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We also had, Stacy gave you waiting to do one more comment. Welcome back.
Yeah, I'd also like to talk about that, the issue with Bermuda. And I had spoken with Justin about this and I had spoken to the gentleman that just spoke. And I agree, the minute that you pave that road, it has become a highway. I mean, I literally, my wife's out there guarding and I, not exaggerating, I have seen cars do 60 miles an hour. I had to pull one guy out of his car in the middle of the night because he wrapped it around the pole. It's a traffic way from people to get from downtown drunk to the freeway. And the minute the police officer goes to the U-Haul parking lot to pull over cars, he doesn't even spin around. By the time he spins his car around, he's already lighting them up. It is a racetrack. So I think the issue, I mean, yes, I understand that it's bumpy for the bicycles to ride it, but the minute it's paved without doing the things that Justin has been talking about, it has been a disaster bait problem 10 times fold. And then you add 100 people coming in and out of there. It's, it's just, especially at the bend, right where it bends in front of the studio. People fly, they slam on their brakes, they whip around the corner. As Leanna is nodding her head too, she's, she's, she's witnessed it too. Every time my wife is out there guarding, she has to scream at neighbors flying down Bermuda. It is like, sometimes you're like, were they actually on the freeway at that point? It's insane. So I, I think the repavement and the restructuring has to happen at the same time. Because it will just make the problem tenfold if it's a nice smooth ride and it's an open racetrack.
Thank you. So Justin and Councilman Polica, we don't have any budget control over here, but you guys are the ones who make those recommendations and make those approvals. So you've just heard from several residents that we've got a potential area of concern coming forwards. Now you've been forewarned and perhaps can.
Jason and I have talked about it a couple of times back, within the last year or so.
Got it.
For sure. And I, and I appreciate the follow-up. And like I said, you know, Councilman Polica and I will talk with DPW and go from there. I think also if, like I said, I'll plug it one more time. If you go to Ferndale moves, M-O-V-E-S dot com. Right now the city's really begging basically for input on the mobility plan. And so there's a web map there. There's an email address also. You can always just email me as well with thoughts. But you can actually like drop a pin and make a comment on Bermuda Street and say, I think a crosswalk should go here. I think that there's not enough lighting on the street. I think a, you know, traffic calming device of some sort should go on the street. And that really, that really helps staff a ton when we're asking for budget increases and thinking about future construction. And so. Right. We definitely hear you for sure.
Right. Well, also I know my, my wife had gone to the police department and spoke with Officer Pierce and the following morning at 8:30 in the morning, he himself, the traffic control police officer, came out and put the 25 mile an hour sign up up there. And that lasted for a couple of weeks. So I don't know if there's data in there, but I can guarantee you, I know the officers that I've spoken to with numerous times that sat there and were trying to write tickets, said they averaged the speed limit on that street is 40 miles an hour easily all day long. So I know that if that machine keeps the data of all the recordings of speeds that have gone through for the time period that it was up, that might be helpful to you to be able to say to someone, hey, this is what's going on. This is crazy. We need to control this, you know. And maybe that can help allocate some money for those situations.
Thank you. I'll follow up with Officer Simpson. I appreciate that.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Erin, do we have any other, hands up, anyone else waiting?
We have one more from.
That has joined?
Yep, we have one more from Erin.
Great. Thank you. Hi Erin.
Hi again. So I just wanted to advocate slash request for Bermuda to be repaved, like when it's supposed to be repaved on schedule and not be incumbent upon developers' plans that change all the time. So I'm going to agree with the developers on that one, please. Because it really needs to be repaved. And then I just wanted to say one thing because Councilman just said about, he didn't think that there'd be a lot of people parking on Minerva because it's a dead end. So with the dance studio, you would think, because there's tons of parking over there in Iron Ridge, although some of the, some of the parking was under construction over the summer. But you would think that people would park over there. But like she, the owner of the dance studio had to like go on her Instagram and like implore people, her customers to please park in those other lots and not on the streets. So I, I think, I, this goes a little bit back to maybe like the wayfinding signs in the Iron Ridge development. Like I don't know that it's super obvious that you can park over there and that, that could be overflow parking. So if that could be communicated, you know, via signage to residents or, you know, within the Iron Ridge District, that, that it is like public parking when it's not business hours or something, I think that would be useful. Even just to indicate that like there's parking over here and it's okay if you go use it. Because I don't think that's necessarily obvious. And people were, were definitely parking on Minerva, you know, over the summer when the dance studio was open.
That's really helpful. Thank you. All right. Any final, thank you. Yes. Any final questions or comments or any other feedback on this from the planning commission? Again, there's not a formal site plan, so there's no action on this. This was a discussion. And I also want to ask the, the owner and the developer, did you guys get the feedback? Was there anything else you wanted us? Anything you wanted to ask us? Anything else you wanted to get feedback on from us that we haven't touched on?
No, I, I think this is helpful and, and I appreciate everyone's time.
You very much.
Well, likewise, the, the willingness of our property owners and, you know, potential developers to interact with their neighbors is something that's becoming really increasingly important in the last few years. We really didn't have any significant new residential developments for decades. Nothing like this. So making sure that people know what's going on is, is the reason that we started doing these discussions. And so thank you for participating.
Right.
All right. So now neighbors know where to find you guys. Neighbors know where to find our city staff. So this is good.
Through the chair. I just did want to add one thing because I know it was really one of the big things discussed. And so the multiple family dwellings ordinance related to overall length. So I'll, I'll just read it and, you know, I'll talk about how it was, has been interpreted on our past projects. So it just states that facades shall not exceed 150 feet in overall length in a given plane, inclusive of, inclusive of any architectural features that are attached to the building or connect the parts of the building together. And so in the past, where that's been, because it is sort of a little, it's, it's an ordinance that we've wanted to change, I think, for a while as part of maybe some future multifamily dwelling ordinances. But it is what we're working with right now. And it does say, or in the past, it's been interpreted to say that, or that the commission has directed, you know, if roof structures are completely separated from one half of the building to the other and, you know, different building materials are adjusted and that sort of thing, or like the roof angles have been, you know, separate and different, that's, that's where those waivers have came in. Or the projects have been downtown where there's some different processes. So that's a whole lot of words I just threw at you. But just wanted to provide some history on that. And so, you know, it, it really depends on the definition of given plane. And if, you know, if those roof structures are separate, I think that's where the commission can potentially consider something, you know, that was shown tonight. But I just wanted to put that out there for, for the group to think about.
Is this something that we can work with you on, Justin, to, to kind of look at, dig into? So that when we come back to, to the commission, that we feel, we all feel confident that it's, it's meeting the intent of the ordinance?
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that, you know, the commission is aware, or so that we have a different commission members than were here before. So I want to make sure that they have the history too.
Got it.
Because the commissioners, the commission makes the decision based on the interpretation of the ordinance. So.
Got it. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to our staff and our neighbors. Thank you to the property owner and our potential developer here. The next time that this comes back, this is a use that is permitted in this particular zone. So the next time it comes back, it would likely be with a site plan. So that is where we would take a look at a much more formal proposal. And, you know, possibly some of the, the changes and modifications that have been discussed this evening. But just to let everyone know what to keep an eye out for. Next thing that would come would most likely be a formal site plan.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. We will move to item number nine, our administrative items. I know we do have one this evening. It has already actually been touched on just a little bit. Now that, well, I was going to say welcome back, Justin, in our commission items, but I can say welcome back, Justin. Because we've been kind of putting off and like kicking, kicking this can toward you for the last couple of months.
And I've just built a snow fort to block it.
I know, right? Some ordinance updates that we all know we need to do some work on, particularly around residential. So I want to give you and Erin a chance to talk a little bit about what you guys are planning while I go grab a Kleenex and I'll be right back.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. So I know that we had previously, you know, discussed in Justin's absence and even before Justin's absence, this parental leave of some, a variety of different ordinances that we would like to update. And we know that needs some work. And based on the volume of work that needs to be done in addition to the planned master land use planning process that's coming in the springtime and throughout this year, we would like to open it up to the commission on inviting somebody to volunteer to be a representative to help staff with those ordinance updates. It would entail research and reviewing our current ordinance, providing some recommendations and comments, probably working with us on, in kind of like a workshop form to, to prepare it. And then it would be presented obviously to the planning commission and then for formal adoption in front of city council. So we aren't expecting anybody to volunteer tonight, although if you do want to volunteer tonight, we welcome that. Because one of the things you were thinking about over the next month and perhaps the next planning commission on the 20th or the following one in February is to create a list of really exactly what we're looking for as far as updates. And we know that there are quite a few. And if we can open it up once and do everything all together, that's probably more efficient. But we also know it's, it's a very large volume. So that's one of the main administrative items. And Justin, I don't know if you wanted to jump in and add anything to that?
I think that essentially covers it. I mean, I have, you know, this list of ordinances from earlier that are, you know, things that I think that some are, some are tougher than others and some I think probably should just be part of the master plan later this year. But there are others that are, you know, a little bit easier to tackle, like potentially like accessory structures in commercial districts or updating the upper level residential definition, which was a, something we covered a decent amount last year and the BZA dealt with as well. So, you know, I, I think at the next meeting, if, if someone from the commission would like to volunteer and help us, you know, help potentially, you know, sort of audit the ordinance, but also, you know, provide some assistance in, in text. I mean, we all, we're fortunate, we have such an awesome community and talented commission that I think, you know, people could bring a lot of value. And as Chair Baker reminded me, the, some of the previous commissioners and including some of our current ones helped to write the current zoning ordinance back in 2008, 2010. So, but, so I guess folks don't have to answer right now, but you know, if someone would like to send Erin and I their interest of being a volunteer. And then I would say for homework, if everyone at the next meeting, you know, if they have their list of ordinances that they have, you know, they're just sick of, they want AC units, you know, covered more specifically, you know, any, anything that's even small or big, let's talk about our list and we can prioritize it.
Ms. Commissioner Foster, I really liked that approach, especially of having a list. My only recommendation or tweak on that would be, and I hope that this doesn't offend any of the people who helped in the 2008 rewriting of the zoning ordinance, because I actually have also written quite a bit of the zoning ordinance as it is currently. But I think that we actually just need a completely updated zoning ordinance, especially following the master plan. And so I would implore us to look at that list of updates of the zoning ordinance, but really just narrow it down to things that we think that are really important to enact within the next year to two years before a zoning ordinance would be updated. Because I think that, you know, without a complete rework of the zoning ordinance, we're going to potentially shoot ourselves in the foot of just not having a comprehensive view and also not being responsive to the master plan. So thank you.
Through the chair, this Councilman Polica. Yeah, I guess I, I have a question based on what Commissioner Foster just presented. Kind of the, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Is, does the?
The master plan comes first.
Pardon?
Master plan comes first.
Master, so, so in all essence, we should maybe put our list together of those things, make sure that they're included in the master plan. And then after the master plan is completed, then look at a rewrite of the ordinances.
Yeah, you're, you are right on, you're right on track, right on, right on point. I know you were here for the, on the commission for the last round of this some years ago. But the typically, the master plan is, is definitely a guiding document that lays out a vision for, for the city. And then the zoning ordinance gets the nitty gritty. You know, there are some things, you know, like Michelle said, where like I'm, my, my head is going to explode if we cannot update the residential zoning to make sure that our two and our three districts have front doors that address the primary streets. Like it's, I'm going to lose my mind. You know, so there's things like that where I don't think anyone's going to disagree, nor is it going to dramatically impact the, 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 the vision. the, 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 the vision or even the implementation of the ordinance. But I think we're gonna get way better projects coming to us because it'll be clearer of the intent for some multifamily infill. So, sorry, I missed the very beginning of this conversation. It's very dry in this house and I'm like sitting here coughing at myself. But I think Justin, those are sort of the things that we've been talking about a little bit, Justin and Erin are like.
Yeah.
That list of things that like, I'm gonna pull out my hair if I can't have front doors to address the street. Okay.
Yeah. I should clarify, like, I, we want to tackle the, the things that we've all just seen over and over from site plans that we're like, oh, we just got to update this ordinance. And then, then comes the master plan. And that's where you probably would tackle the bigger things, like what kind of zoning ordinance would we want or amendments would we want for all of our residential and, you know, bigger, bigger things like that. And in it, in a rewrite is something that, you know, we are planning on putting in the capital improvement plan because I do think it might be an expense. But once we see what the list is, I think we'll know further. But yeah, I would love to rewrite the whole thing. I think, and not, not that we remove everything that's in it, there's a lot of good in it. But I think, you know.
Yeah. Well, and, and I, as I think Commissioner Braga pointed out very clearly tonight, is that the limitations of some of our design requirements. And, and there's, I see the good and the bad of form-based ordinance. The problem is what we have couldn't even, some of the buildings that we have in Ferndale for the last 80, 100 years, you couldn't build today because our ordinances say you can't based on the way that they look. You know, we're asking for other, you know, things that are, are not common to the characteristics of our city today. So I, I, there does need to be a rewrite. And I don't think you could include a lot of that in some of these updates. But I, I do agree that we need to do that. And I'd be happy to be a part of that, though I don't know. As a council member, I know I'm commissioner, but I don't know if as a council member, I can actually be a part of that.
Of course you could.
Hoping on it as well.
No, of cour-, of course you could. And I think, you know, Greg, if, if that was something, you know, that you wanted to, to, to dig into some specific things so that you could discuss them with council, because ordinance updates do ultimately go to council. Of course you could, if you wanted to.
Well, but the problem is, is that I'm, you know, there are so many other talented people on this commission that I would much rather have someone who's familiar with coding and ordinances of, you know, construction and all that than someone like me who's probably going to ask more questions than provide more, you know, guidance.
It's, I wouldn't.
For more than one person, you know, if I could be as well as another person, you know, I, I don't know if that's going to be overwhelming for the work that Erin and Justin want to do. So.
I would never discourage you because I think you are such an important liaison to the council. And I want you to feel confident in what you are taking to the council as well as discussing with residents. So I would certainly never discourage you just because you feel like, you know, you don't have a handle on zoning law. Actually, you probably have a better handle on zoning law than any of us. I should, that was a bad example. You sat on the BZA for a long time.
Far more knowledgeable about this stuff than I am.
Sat on the zoning board for a long time. So, all right.
Well, I think the other thing that Erin and I talk about often too is like, it doesn't need to be, no offense to any of us, but the ordinance doesn't have to be so plenary. Like, I know that there's legal things that we have to have in it. But, you know, making it more readable to, you know, the community. I mean, that's, that's kind of what our end goal in mind is thinking. We may not get to it with these, you know, small updates, but long term, you know, if we rewrite it, that's what I would want.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on administrative items?
The only quick item is we did have a discussion internally today, just full disclosure and transparency for everyone regarding minutes and how minutes would be conducted in the future. And, you know, Jordan or Justin, please feel free to weigh in as well. But one of the things that we have been running up against is the complexity of the minutes, which on one hand is really fantastic, but also can be burdensome as well. And so moving forward, we are going to be taking minutes very similar to how council minutes are being taken. So it's not going to necessarily be a verbatim line by line transcription of the meeting, but more of an overview of the topics, pertinent information included. And, and that sort of minutes similar to what you will see for city council moving forward. Anyone else wants to weigh in on that and add any context, but that was the discussion we had today.
Yep, that's definitely come up in the past. So I wasn't surprised that that was the direction you guys decided to go.
This is Commissioner Foster. And for one reason, I keep saying that it's just to help on the minutes as they're written, because I know they are so onerous. I just want to say I appreciate that. I think that's more akin to how I see most other planning commissions commit their meeting minutes. I was gonna say, one of my commissioner items would, it's kind of related to this, so I think I'm gonna say it here, if you don't mind. I think it might be helpful to have the minutes from when the, the ordinance for that 150 design requirement for buildings could be included when, if this site plan comes back to the commission, just so we do have the intent of the commission, why they adopted that. And so in that light, I think that as long as, you know, the intent is is shown within those meeting minutes, I think that's, you know, all that's really necessary.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple of commission items.
I had one more.
Oh, go ahead. Yep, Justin. Yeah.
Just briefly, I mentioned it earlier, but we are making some very good progress on the mobility plan. Ferndalemoves.com is where you can find that, if you haven't seen it already. And so there's some preliminary recommendations that were presented at a meeting in December. And so, you know, there's still time. The map technically will probably close this Friday. But, you know, really, we've gotten great feedback so far. There was a lot of great feedback at the December meeting and would love to get more people informed. Our steering committee and our partners at Tool Design, they have done some extra outreach to different groups and stuff like that. And so we're trying to capture as much feedback as possible. But that is, you know, the place where if you would like to see, you know, traffic calming on a certain street, you know, improved sidewalk, narrowing of Woodward, any of those sorts of things, that's the great place to get feedback for right now. And then eventually the plan will be coming back to the planning commission, hopefully for your recommendation of adoption and then council after that.
And if I may add to that as well, it is in relation to mobility, but we have another community meeting specific to Woodward that we have a save the date for. It will be on January 27th at 6:30. And it will, if you attended the previous Ferndale Moves Woodward meeting back in December, it'll have a very similar format to that. It'll talk more explicitly about some of the history of Woodward and where we're at today and future timeline as far as the discussion and any potential updates to it.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yep, Councilman.
I, you mentioned that you were looking at probably closing the website this Friday. I was actually wondering, is there opportunity to keep it open for one more week? And at Monday's council meeting, do a quick presentation, five minute presentation? Show the people how to get to the website, how easy it is to just pinpoint on a road, to show an example of, you know, what they can do, what they could add. And then at that point, let them know that, you know, this is going to be closing on that Friday. And that would, you know, usually with shorter deadlines, it encourages people to, to, to act a little quicker. And so you may get a bit more feedback from that. And then maybe Kara could do a quick video of just your portion of presentation and throw it on, on the, the social media.
Yeah. So we've actually have, after the December meeting, we have it posted on our Ferno Moves website on how to actually use the interactive web map. And that was pushed via social media as well previously. The plan was to make another push this week and actually today, due to the unrest that is currently happening in our nation's capital, we have chosen to delay that until tomorrow so that there could be a little bit better attention and it didn't get buried in some of the discussions that are being had right now. So we do actually already have a, an interactive video for that. It's on our Ferndale Moves website. It's the first item underneath the latest news, comment on Ferndale Moves draft recommendations. So that has been posted since after that December meeting. Certainly, I think that we can push it again. And I think that we have an update with Tool Design to talk about keeping that open. And that's something that we can discuss and consider certainly.
Good. Thanks.
Okay. You ready for commission items? I'll be quick because we already went over really two of them. So we've got reappointments coming up at our next meeting. So the clerk will be reaching out to Brittany and Matt and me. We are the three who are up for reappointment. So you'll be hearing, I think from the clerk's office, maybe from Justin or Erin, about what your next term would look like and whether or not you'd like to stand for reappointment. So also at our next meeting, we would be doing elections for chair, vice chair and zoning board liaison. Ian was our longtime zoning board liaison. He's still the chair of the zoning board. But we need a new commission connection to the zoning board. So if anyone is interested in any of those positions, just shoot Erin an email. Otherwise, we can just talk about it as it comes. We talked a little bit already about ordinance updating liaison. So raise your hands for that. Already welcomed back Justin. Yes, full team again. And I believe that there's another part-time team member who I met yesterday. I don't think he's here today, but would you let us know who that is?
Yeah. So his name is Greg Holman. He went through the planning program at U of M. He previously worked in the city of Detroit and he's helping us out on a part-time basis for some overflow, overflow planning work. And you may or may not see his name on some of the things that come through. So.
Thank you. And then also, we had like superstar presentation today from our new commissioner. That was so fun, Patrick. We've had, I think, in this past year, a couple, Matt most recently put together sort of a presentation on a topic that, that he was really passionate about. And that is one of those things on our list of things to deal with in our ordinance. It's about metal panels. So you'll be hearing about metal paneling and sheeting. And Matt had a great presentation on that. But it's, what a, what a great example of one of the positives of this Zoom meeting format, that we can share things with each other in different ways like that. So that was awesome. So I want to welcome Patrick Braga, our new commissioner. I want to give you a chance to introduce yourself. And then we'll just do a quick round robin, introduce ourselves.
Sure. Well, thank you so much for having me as a commissioner. I'm really excited. This is the first time I'm serving on a planning commission. I think it was actually about 10 years ago when in 11th or 12th grade, I went to my first ever county, like public hearing down in Sarasota, Florida. And when I watched the video of it a couple of years ago, it was like totally unintelligible. I was just like a teenager speaking before a government board. And eventually I grew into being a massive zoning nerd. I love reading zoning codes and thinking about the magic that language in a zoning ordinance has to shape the physicality of the city. I think that connection between how we verbalize the rules of our environment and the like results that we see. But yeah, for me, it's a fascinating intellectual and kind of emotional exercise. Yeah. And so kind of my background, I studied urban planning, music and economics in undergrad. I'm also a composer. So the way that I analyze buildings is kind of similar to how I analyze music. Worked for a year with a small real estate developer to help him diversify his luxury student housing business into also including affordable housing and then market rate and other markets. Just finished my master's degree in urban planning with a concentration in real estate and kind of accidental concentration in affordable housing specifically within that. Graduated in May, moved to Michigan to work for, just finished six months with the Detroit Housing Commission. And now I'm working in the private sector, real estate development again, at both the affordable and market rate housing sector. So super excited.
Well, welcome to Ferndale. Welcome to the commission. I think we all met you not long after you had started with the Detroit Housing Commission when we were first kind of talking about full circle and some of the other affordable projects that are coming before us in 2021. So I will, I will forever remember you as one of the people who like hung out with us till the very end of a planning commission meeting.
I'm a nerd like that.
Me too. I think I scared the clerk in Detroit when I stayed like way after one of my agenda items once. And she was like, you know that yours is done now, honey, right? So I'm Kate Baker. I'm the chair of the planning commission. I've been on the commission for about 13 years now. Started when I was a council member many, many years ago. And I'm a Ferndale Pleasant Ridge native. And my educational background is in government and urban planning. And my work background is a sort of a mix of arts and culture, nonprofit management, and now affordable housing development. So that is me. And I live near the Dairy Queen. So I live on the, in the southwest quadrant of Ferndale. So I'm going to kick it over to Commissioner Haskew next because you're next in my picture.
Hey there. Welcome, Brittany Haskew. I work for the state's economic development agency doing real estate and community development in the city of Detroit. Welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner Haskew. And Commissioner Azar, you are next in my picture.
Hi, um, welcome. Great to have you. I'm very excited about your excitement. I've been on the commission longer than Kate Baker, like forever. And Ferndale resident for 27 years now. And an architect by, by trade and practices mostly project management in K-12 and higher education mostly. So, but very happy to have you on board.
Thanks, Krista. Commissioner Hagfors?
Hey, I'm Dustin Hagfors. I am glad that you're here because now I'm no longer a new guy. I've just been on the planning commission for a few months now. I am also an urban planner by education with a focus in transportation planning. I am currently a transportation planner for the smart bus system. So you'll see our bus is going up now in Woodward primarily in Nine Mile. And I live in southeast Ferndale, near the Woodward Taco Bell, not the Nine Mile one. So, welcome.
And Commissioner Foster?
Hi, Michelle. Moved to Ferndale about 12 years ago when I started my graduate degree at Wayne State University. So I have a master's in urban planning and worked in professional, as a professional planner for about eight years, including at the city of Ferndale and then as a consultant to Ferndale and Metro Detroit municipalities. I now work in, as a financial analyst in affordable housing real estate.
Thanks, Michelle. And Commissioner Brayson?
Hi, welcome, Deb. I've been on the planning commission longer than Kate, but not quite as long as Krista. Architect by education, project manager currently, Ferndale resident for 18 years and one month. And yet, welcome to the commission.
That was so specific, Deb. And Councilman Polika?
Welcome, Greg Polika. And I have been involved with Ferndale politically since 2005, when I first worked on the human rights campaign, the human rights ordinance. And so I got the political bug on, on that campaign and kind of took it forward. And 2013, I was elected to office and serving my second term. And I love it. It is the best job for the worst money. But it's great to be able to help people in our community and to serve our community. So that's, that's really what I love about it. And my day job is, I'm a, my official title is Tread Act Planner for Ford Motor Company. The Tread Act is a law that was enacted by Congress many years ago. And it requires the automotive industry to report certain data on a quarterly basis to the government. And so I'm responsible for collecting, reporting, and then. And so I'm responsible for collecting, reporting and then talking to NHTSA regarding that data. And so it's a really, really fun job, not, but I, I enjoy the people that I work with. That's, that's what's really great about it. And what I love about this commission is that we have some really, really talented people, as you have just met. We're very, very fortunate. And I'm, I'm glad that you're on board because you are another talented individual that is going to be able to really help move our city forward. So, welcome.
Thanks, Greg. And Jordan, are you our new liaison to the commission from the clerk's office officially?
I am. I am the clerk for the planning commission and the board of zoning deals.
Wonderful. Thank you. So well, official welcome. I mean, you filled in as you guys were all running around like mad over the last quarter of 2020. I knew you were here a couple of times for and with Barb, but welcome. We'll try to, we'll try to speak slowly and keep good notes, which is harder to do on Zoom than it is in person. But always stop us when you've got a question or want something repeated, please, because better than having, better than having to do it over, you know, twice. We just stop in first hand.
Thank you. I, I think the, the, in practices that we settled on to, to take notes the way notes or, or minutes are taken for city council going to sidestep most of those opportunities for confusion. So that'll be a shift that'll help everybody.
That's great. Aaron and, or, or Justin, you might have mentioned this when I stepped away, but a little bit of an update, and I guess we'll all see it when the next set of minutes come through. But anything you want to share with us about, next time, about the new types of minutes? And maybe anything that we should or shouldn't focus on, you know, like if you and Jordan have any guidelines for making motions differently or not doing friendly amendments or whatever you'd want us to change, just let us know. All right. Anything else from the commission this evening? Okay. All right, guys, it's not 10, but sorry, this was a long one for only two items. Thank you. I think we had a really good conversation with some neighbors who we're gonna see again, I imagine, in a couple of months. So I think they all got a lot of questions answered. So thanks for your time and your efforts and have a good evening and happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year, everybody. Take care.
Yours.
Thanks for having me.
Hey, Patrick.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.